That was a little fancy. Welcome to the Burbank Unified School District Board of Education Regular Meeting of Thursday, August 18, 2022. If I could please invite Dawn Barnes up to the podium to lead us in the flag salute. Oh, and her special guest with who is going to help, I'm sorry, Addie LaFredo.
Thank you for the invite. Please stand, place your right hand over your heart, ready, begin. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you very much to both of you. Dr. Weisberg?
Yes. Oh. We acknowledge the traditional ancestral unceded territory of the Chumash Tongva, Fernandeno Tatavaim, and First Nations on which we are learning, educating, and living.
Thank you very much. Reporting on closed session, it was for informational purposes only, no action items were taken. Items for future agendas, oh, excuse me, number six, adjustments to the agenda.
President Tabit.
Mr. Ferguson.
I will move, due to the number of cards that we have, I'm just going to move that we consolidate public comment periods and move it up. So I will move that we consolidate items 10A and 14A into one period of public comment for a period of five minutes. I will move that items 10B and 14B be combined into one staff response period. And I'll move that items 10C and 14C be combined into one board response period and that these be placed after item number seven on the agenda.
Second.
Thank you. If for some reason can I just do some clarification, someone shows up and does want to speak at the end, are we okay to let that happen? Okay, great.
That would be typical under one period of public comment.
Yep, okay, just wanted to say it, thanks. Items for future agenda, number seven.
Do we have to vote?
Oh.
Yeah, we've got to vote first.
Okay. To adjust the agenda, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Agenda adjustment motion carries, thank you. Items for future agenda.
Sorry, President Tabit, can I just have one clarification? Are you still going to have item 9A, the LA Valley presentation before public comment?
No.
Okay, I just want to clarify.
The motion was after item seven.
Okay.
I'm over here.
Can I make a rean?
Yeah.
Okay.
My, I'm s-
Nope, please.
My, my thought with that is, is that these are teachers, they've had a long day in the classroom, I want to be able to get them home. They are clearly here spending their time with us after a long day, teachers and other support staff, so sorry if I didn't, wasn't inclusive with that language, so.
All right. We're going to move you down a little bit, thank you. Okay, go ahead.
For items for future agenda?
Yes.
Okay, so it's been quite a week for IT, who are our superhero rock stars. I know that Rick is going to be putting together some sort of a report about this week, and I would love for it to come back to the board so that we can hear about ways we can support IT moving forward, places for growth, and ways that we can, again, support them in a myriad ways, myriad ways, so that's it.
Thank you. Ever anybody else? Number eight, reports from the board.
After item number seven was the motion.
Oh, is that it? Oh, okay, my bad. Gotcha. So we're going to move ahead then to public communications, 10A or 14, no, 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 we're moving ahead with public communication. So the first person with, filled out a blue card, so they're all blue cards tonight, which for public would normally be at the end of the meeting. So what Mr. Ferguson did was flip that, so you're now at the beginning of the meeting, and anyone else who would show up for clarification. So Dawn Barnes is our first speaker this evening, followed by Addison LaFredo. Dawn Barnes and company.
And company. Thank you very much for generously making that motion, we greatly appreciate it. Good evening to all. I am Dawn Barnes, faculty chair of Luther Burbank Middle School. I am here on behalf of our dedicated and hardworking community to communicate the crisis of inequities at Luther Burbank Middle School. We have prepared a group statement to respect the time of this evening and allow students and parents to communicate their concerns as well. We would like to take this time to thank Dr. Weisberg for attending two onsite meetings last week, and Dr. Hill, Dr. Paramo, and BTA president Diana Abasta for attending our staff meeting on Tuesday. We appreciate your time to discuss our concerns. Luther has been awarded the California Distinguished School Award, the Gold Ribbon School Award, the California Pivotal Practice School Award, the California Title I Academic Award, and the California Exemplary Arts Program Award. We take pride in our core values of respect, excellence, and community, which drives our instructional values and leadership goals. Luther has felt the support of its students, parents, staff, and community. Due to the inequity of certain district policies and enrollment decline, we feel that the district has not protected the educational institution of Luther. As a community, we have continued to provide an exceptional educational program for our students, as we have continued to accept loss of staff positions, including teachers, support staff, and an assistant principal, heavier workloads for our special education teachers, bigger classes, and now a loss of an entire art program. Luther has two designated feeder schools, which means we can only rely on enrollment projections of these schools to plan for the new school year, along with three choice schools and incoming permits. In the last five years, we have experienced a continuous decline in enrollment, which our district has refused to acknowledge and address proactively. Our school leadership, including Dr. Macias, Mrs. Vineyard, Mr. Ludwig, and Mr. Constine, have worked tirelessly to face the issues with enrollment and staffing while cultivating a safe school environment. The problem is not the fault of our school, our principal, our administration, teachers, or community. It is the district responsibility to protect the schools of BUSD. Across the district, the middle schools have more than 200 students over projected numbers. Luther did not benefit from these new students. Due to the inequity of district enrollment policies, our students are facing challenges that are out of our community hands. Our students are no longer receiving equitable resources and programs as the other middle schools. Due to enrollment inequities, Luther lost a female PE teacher this year. Our one female teacher has been given a .2 to cover six periods and solely supervise 90-plus students in the locker room each period. This is an unsafe environment. This week, a PE supervised position has been offered and flown, but this is not a sustainable solution. Due to enrollment inequities, Luther was not allowed to hire a replacement for a special education teacher for a retiree this year. Guarantees of an attenuant to help the classes and caseloads were not fulfilled, and now our special education teachers are absorbing the extra duties which affects the resources provided to our special education students. Due to enrollment inequities, Luther lost an assistant principal of discipline four years ago. This action has affected the safety of our students. Our admin team counselors, intervention specialists work hard to fill those gaps. This was a very difficult year last year when we transitioned from distance learning to in-person, and we saw a rise of discipline issues which put a strain on our staff, students, and administration. Due to enrollment inequities, Luther lost an art teacher this year. This has eliminated an entire program, a program that many students look forward to, a program that for many is the one outlet during the day, in particular for our bridge students. A program which attracted students to Luther is now gone. The program included one-year-long class, two semester classes, and two wheel art classes. The repeated number of 60 students being enrolled in art is inaccurate because it did not include the wheel classes for the incoming sixth graders. The decision was made by the district not, sorry, this decision was made by the district but not communicated to the Luther community, which is what we asked repeatedly to be done. The lack of ownership has created a mistrust within the community. The loss of the program was not the decision made by our school, but now our school community must endure the consequences. The recent offer of 2.2 positions to provide some art instruction by non-art credential teachers is not equitable or sustainable, nor is it providing, thank you, nor is it providing access to art classes for all students who wish to participate due to scheduling issues now. Having Luther teachers teach extra classes regardless of extra period is not providing an equitable or sustainable solution. Our students will now again have to go through a scheduling problem. When we met with Dr. Hill on Tuesday, he assured us that Luther would not lose another program. But why did we lose the program at all? We should never have lost a program at our school. This is a reactive approach, which is irresponsible of the district to have allowed this inequity to have occurred at Luther or any school in the Burbank Unified School District. We want a plan of action, not just one that will get us through the year, a plan which will provide action to eliminate these inequities. We need a one-year plan, three-year plan, five-year plan in order to be proactive and support the educational excellence of Luther Burbank Middle School. We look forward to creating a working partnership with the district and our community and developing a plan to promote growth at Luther. It will take time to rebuild the trust and confidence in Dr. Hill, the Board of Education, and the district leadership, but we hope that it will be restored through dedication and partnership. We recognize that the inequities will not be solved quickly. We challenge the district to look at the feeder schools and the current permit practices to find possible solutions. Luther did not get to this place overnight, and it might take time to remedy the inequities, but it is time for the district to address the issues facing Luther's community. It is time to protect the values of our Luther community, support the students of today and the future. Luther community has done their part. Dr. Macias and our administrative team have done their part. It's time for the district to do their part. Thank you very much for your time and letting us speak tonight, we appreciate it.
Next speaker, and thank you very much for tonight, our next speaker is Addison LaFredo, followed by Shannon LaFredo.
Hello, my name is Addison LaFredo, and I'm a seventh grader at Luther Burbank Middle School. I found out today that there will be one art class coming back to school that I could get into, but I don't want my schedule to be changed for the fourth time, plus it's not with Ms. Rubio or an actual art teacher. These are my feelings about the issue and what stress you have caused me. When COVID shut everything down and I couldn't play on any of my sports teams, I turned to art. I would do online tutorials and teach myself. Last year, I was lucky enough to get art as an elective. I loved the class and Ms. Rubio. She taught us so many different concepts. She was a great teacher. I loved her class so much that I chose art for my seventh grade semester elective. I was upset back in May when I was told that art was being taken away from Luther. My mom sent some emails and we heard back it was actually coming back. I was happy all summer knowing that I would get to be in art. I picked up my seventh grade schedule on August 3, and there it was, art. Even better, it was with Ms. Rubio again. Just a few days before school started, my mom told me that art was taken away again. Now I was scrambling trying to find another elective to replace art. On my second day, on my second and third choices, we're already full at this point, so I was forced to choose something I didn't really want. My schedule changed again for the third time on the second day of school. I had to, I had, I had to go to two different classes with two different teachers on Tuesday. This is all because you took art away from us at Luther. How is it fair that my friends at Huerta and MIR still have art? It makes us feel like you don't treat all your students in this district fairly, and some schools are better than others in your eyes. Thank you.
Next is Shannon LaFredo, followed by Linda Gregorchak.
Gregorchak.
Gregorchak, thank you, apologize for that.
Hello, now from a parent's perspective, my name is Shannon LaFredo, and I'm Addison's mom. Yes, I received the email today and heard that art is coming back to Luther. I wouldn't say it's truly coming back. It's one class for sixth graders, a combo class for seventh, eighth graders, neither being taught by an actual art teacher. Some people might call it baby steps, I call it a Band-Aid, just a quick fix to cover up a much larger district issue. I wrote this prior to receiving the news today, but a lot of it still pertains, and I want my voice to be heard. Shame on me for not paying more attention at the district and board level prior to COVID, but since then, I've quickly learned how reactive this district is and not proactive. This art situation at Luther is a perfect example of this. I'm not asking for the elaborate elective opportunities we were given years ago like metal shop, wood shop, pottery, wheel, or calligraphy. We're talking about art, beginning art, art, and advanced art. We have been told the reason for taking art away is due to enrollment numbers. Ms. Tabit, you stated on Twitter a few days ago that only 12 students requested art. The elective wheel alone, period in three and four, generate two classes. Then you have periods five and six. In talking to employees at Luther, there was an average of 20 students in each class, periods three through six, and 15 in advanced art. The irony of this is mind-blowing on multiple levels. Luther was recently recognized by the state of California as one of the 2021 exemplary art education schools. Forget that as of now, they won't even qualify for this anymore. What's more ironic is Dr. Hill's welcome back email from last week. His district-wide goals were attached completely contradict what has happened to Luther. Item 1.7 states, quote, "Maintain access to visual and performing arts education and implement the BUSD Arts for All Plan," end quote. Well, forget maintaining it, it doesn't even exist. There is not Arts for All, there's Arts for MIR and Huerta only. I'm quite perplexed on how the district can actually get away with removing art from Luther. The California Arts Standard for Public Schools, which is adopted by the California State Board of Education on January 19, 2019, states, quote, "Art education boosts school attendance, academic achievement, college attendance rates, improves school climate, and promotes higher self-esteem and social-emotional development. Every child should have equitable access to high-quality, standard-based art education and thrive, to thrive and participate in modern society," end quote. More specifically, the California Education Code, quote, "Requires courses in the, of study in the arts to be offered to all California students," end quote. That could be found in Education Code 51220 for you to reference. Maybe now that you have accomplished all you wanted to over the summer with the renewal of contracts that weren't even up yet, including raises, you can now work on getting art back at Luther. And I'm talking about the art program they used to have, thank you.
Thank you, Shannon. Linda Gregorchak?
Yes.
Better the second time, I'm, thank you, followed by Jackson Burrows.
Good evening, President Tabit and fellow board members. My name is Linda Gregorchak. I have been a teacher in BUSD for over 30 years, and I'm also a parent, I'm sorry, this is very, very emotional for me, of a sixth grader at Luther Burbank Middle School. He was very, very excited about attending Luther and having an art class. His fifth grade teacher, Mr. Calcoff, sparked and art interested him. Over COVID, it really kept him grounded, whence he started to be inspired with art. It was very difficult for him. I was teaching full-time, very, very many hours in one room, he was doing his classes in the other. Sorry. Last year again, he had Mr. Calcoff for fifth grade, who also inspired him again with art. He became a different student at school. I am extremely concerned about the inequity amongst the middle schools in Burbank. I question the priorities of a school board that approves an exorbitant raise for an administration such that one of our district employees is earning more than the governor of California, and yet cut the art teacher at Luther Burbank Middle School. It seems that if you are committed to BUSD remaining irreputable and sought-after district, you would find a way to divide the school populations such that they all remain equitable and excellent. We have already lost principals to other districts, for at least this summer alone, and we do not want to lose Dr. Macias. But I fear that is a real risk if he cannot maintain the high standards because he is not being supported by the board of the school district. It is my hope that you will find a way to correct this mistake and bring back an art teacher to Luther. Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Gregorchak. Next is Jackson Burrows, followed by Aram Arakalian.
Hello, my name is Jackson Burrows, and I'm a sixth grader at Luther Burbank Middle School. I'm part of the GATE program, and I'm a dancer. I was zoned for Delores Huerta Middle School, but I chose to transfer to Luther for the excellent programs it offers, the recommendations of older friends of mine who have recently graduated, and because many of my friends have chosen to come here. First, I wanted to thank Dr. Hill and Dr. Paramo-
Paramo.
Paramo, for finding a temporary solution to save Luther's visual arts. Some of my fellow sixth grade students wanted to come here because of the promised art program, and I know they're happy to be able to follow their passion. Another class that was taken away is the PE dance option for eighth graders. This, like visual arts, was also canceled because of lower enrollment. As a person who loves to dance, I know that the physical requirements for high-level dancing. I train and dance multiple times a week, physical conditioning, stretching, flexibility, and endurance training. All of these things are necessary at a high level of dancing. I was excited to know the option of possibly getting to do this in eighth grade. I was excited for my fellow students to have the opportunity to learn this form of physical exercise. Dancing is also art, and the arts can be so beneficial to our health and mental state. After the lockdown from COVID, there's a lot being said about the mental pressures placed upon learners. Art can help us cope when words might fail us. This past summer, I used dancing to help get through my grandpa dying. I was depressed and full of these emotions I had not yet to endure in my life. I used dance to go up with what happened. I choreographed a dance piece about the events and emotions I was experiencing at the time. This is why we both need the PE dance option and the art program. Art, whether visual or physical, are outlets to cope, to try ideas, to be inspired, and express ourselves. For some of us, it is our voice. In fact, this year's PTA reflection theme is "Show Your Voice." Choreography/dance is one of the categories in this art contest. I'm proud of the city we live in. We're in Burbank, and Burbank has so much art. We have things like Disney Studios, Nickelodeon, Warner Brothers, and Hasbro. We are near many other studios and creative companies that rely on the creative talents of people. Art is not just inspiring, it can be a future career for some. Burbank should be leading the way with cooperation from these companies. We need to offer options that make kids and their parents want to keep their kids enrolled in Burbank schools. If you want to stop the lower enrollment at Luther, you, you need to show why this school is as good as a choice as any of the others. We need to ensure that art is never thought of as an extra, which we can cut. We need to showcase Burbank's talent and make others who work here want to send their kids to school here as well. That will stop the lower enrollment problem, that will increase school funding, give us more options, not less. Help us to create, help us to inspire, help us to dance. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Mr. Burrows, job well done. Mr. Aram Arakalian is our next speaker, followed by Rosemary Morrison.
Thank you for the opportunity to speak today. I'm going to shift a little bit gears, I hope everybody here gets their art program, but I'm going to go. I'm going to go a little bit in a different direction. Recently, my child was enrolled in Jefferson Elementary School, and I ran through the policy packet you guys had, and then also a couple days she's already been going, and so I have a few concerns I wanted to discuss. So, and then kind of I want to start this off with like a foundation, and the information that I want to give, or I want to express is about the concept that is the meaning of the word truth. Truth is an absolute standard by which all reality exists and may be measured. Truth lives outside of me and you, meaning if something is true, it doesn't matter if you agree with it, it doesn't matter if you like it, it doesn't matter what you feel about it. No matter how strongly you feel that you can fly like Superman, the truth is you'll never will on Earth without external help. Truth remains to be true, and we have to accept and adapt to the truth. So if you think you can fly, it's best that you not jump off a building, because you will not be disappointed with the results. Truth is not subjective, personal for each individual, but applies to everyone and everything. Our best method for recognizing truth is the Word of God, but many people today prefer the scientific method for determining truth, where we test an idea over and over until it is so constantly reproduced with the same results, and we can't find any reason to suggest otherwise, that we say it is true. It is a good method, not perfect, but it has allowed us to increase our understanding of the world, of the world, and to advance our goals. The reason I am providing this lecture on truth is because it seems to me that this board, under the influences of corrupt government agencies, has thrown out truth and accepted propaganda and lies in the place of truth, specifically on two topics. First, on the topic of transgender theory. I call it a theory because it has not been proven to be true. In fact, all scientific truth that has been discovered show that there is only male and female, which is determined at the moment of conception with new DNA strand, and has been formed during fertilization. The fact that every person is a male or female-
Excuse me. But this has nothing to do with the school district.
It's any item that has to do with the Board of Education, not curriculum. Sorry, I don't mean to interrupt you, but he's in there.
Okay. Thank you. The fact that a person is male or female is coded within every cell of everyone's body. Every cell in your being operates on the information in your DNA. I'm surprised that I even have to explain this, given the policy that you guys currently have, where you will allow anyone into any bathroom, which is a high risk for females especially. There's been already a few cases across the country where males have stated that they are female, whether they feel it or not, doesn't matter. The fact is that they are biologically male, and they have, or across the country, in some cases, molested women in the bathroom, in our schools. We're talking underage kids, teenagers. And up to a few years ago, transgender was rightly, oh, no, I'm sorry, transgender theory was considered a mental disorder called gender dysphoria, and you have allowed people that are in need of mental health, that need counseling, that need help, that need guidance, to influence the school policies instead of giving them the treatment that they need. Therefore, I demand that all policies of the Burbank Unified School District be returned to be grounded in truth and not promote, accommodate, nor even consider in any way the transgender ideology that has been propagated in the school system through teaching and bathroom policy. Second, I'm deeply concerned about the district's response to the COVID virus. Again, you have abandoned truth, and unfortunately becomes servants to tyrants within our government. Instead of looking at the facts, such as recovery rates for children, you have treated them as if they are seniors in their 70s with multiple health problems that are truly at risk with this disease. Instead of promoting methods that work in prevention, such as exercise, healthy diet, and supplement, you're covering our children's faces and depriving them of the much-needed oxygen, forcing them to breathe toxic levels of carbon dioxide, and turn their masks into Petri dishes for fungus and bacteria growth. The masks do nothing for preventing an infection, especially when it is COVID, not an airborne virus, but it can only be contracted to contact. It can only- It can only survive on surfaces, away from sunlight, away from oxygen, away from sanitizer. So instead of putting masks on my kid for 10 days just because someone with a COVID-positive walked into her room, you could just desanitize the room, it'll take 5, 10 minutes, and they don't have to wear a mask anymore. Therefore, I demand, again, that this board return to truth and remove all mask protocols for the school, and until such time-
Mr. Arkellian?
I'm wrapping it up. I have, like, 30 seconds left. And until such time that you return to this truth, I am highly considering removing my child out of your school system, because I will be able to provide them with a safer environment at home, within a homeschooling program. And then you'll have worse of a problem about the declining enrollment that is causing funding problems, I'm sure. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Mr. Arkellian. Our next speaker is Rosemary Morrison, and that is the last blue card I have.
Good evening, Board. Dr. Hill, everyone. I feel like I always get lucky when I get to come. First, let me address what I originally came up for, which is Walt Disney Elementary School. One, we'll miss you. As you know, Ms. Wong is leaving. Ms. Cut Cut, Ms. Cut Cut, sorry, is also leaving, and our school is not finished. There are a couple of things, as I've been driving by, and as I was on campus, not as an employee, but as a parent, which I'm still, one day I'll come back. Anyway, we have a play structure that is not completed. I have asked why. It's something about backorders of things, and that needs to get rectified, no matter what color those stupid shades are. It is 100 degrees out there on that asphalt, and it is the desert. I walked through it yesterday and today, just to put book fair together, and it is ridiculous. We really need to put the structures up as soon as possible. Second, that grass field, it's huge. It's amazing. But why is it getting brown still? I think we should definitely look into that. I know I see the sprinklers, but we do not want the dead grass already, so if somebody could look into that. And second, or third, I don't know what number I'm on, because you guys know I'm thinking about other things that I have to respond to now. The shade situation, as always, I have come up here and talked about that. We were promised shade structures, we were promised trees, I don't know. What I do know is we don't want baby trees and planters. If we're going to get planters of trees, which I understand for the asphalt, looking at my time, that we need to put them in big concrete planters, we want full-grown trees. There is money left over in that budget. If not, I'm sure Ms. Cut Cut would tell me, but there is money for shade. These children should not have no shade on that horribly hot asphalt. Okay, I think I covered everything for Disney. I do want to mention the Luther students that spoke and the parents. I'm going to tell you, music and art are everything, and I applaud the students who came up to speak, because I'm nervous, and I didn't even prepare anything, so you guys did amazing, and I'm glad you had something, but as we know, music and art actually improves test scores. We need to definitely encourage students, if we have low enrollment, instead of pulling a teacher, which my daughter just graduated for Delores, so I know it's an amazing school, but you encourage them. You say, "Hey, why don't you join?" You bring them into the fold, not discontinue it. So my prayer is that you get the program fully and the dance back in 8th grade. Now, I did mention prayer, because as a Christian, I do believe in the truth of my Bible, my God, and my Jesus. I do not look at your pamphlet, I'm sorry, your, our student handbook, as the truth of my Christianity. What I see my handbook as, the truth of our children and our students, and who we represent, which is why I am grateful that we see all of our students as who they are, the truth to them. And while there are many people in this district that may not want to see our students, whether in elementary, middle, or high school, I've been practicing my teeth breaths, can you I strongly encourage us to continue to support them in every way we can. Yes, we will always have people who are up to no good, but the idea that we use one incident somewhere, some place somewhere else, to discontinue a process that will include everyone is ridiculous. So I would like to stand by our student handbook. And the policy that we put mask on our children if there's a positive. My 3rd grader cannot catch it, because he might be immune-compromised, and he has asthma. So if his class gets positive, please do not remove that, because the CDC, full of scientists, tell us that it's true. Thank you so much. I miss you guys already. I will tell you, I will say that with my last 17 seconds, that I want to come back one day to a district that is filled with good people. I know we have a lot of people leaving. Our principal is one, Ms. Cut Cut, and a lot of other people. So I hope we get it, you know, get it together. Have a good night.
Thank you. And Mrs. Abasta, last card.
Good evening, President Tabit, members of the Board, Superintendent Hill, members of the district and the community. My name is Diana Abasta, and I'm a teacher at Burbank High School, and I'm also the proud president of the Burbank Teachers Association. First days, no internet across sites, large classes for many, no AC for some, short on staff, and elimination or cuts in programs. Welcome to our world. Nevertheless, our BTA members show up ready and prepared to not only educate, but to inspire our young people. I'm proud to be a public school teacher, where we educate all children, regardless of background, ethnicity, gender, religion, sexual identity, presentation, and I'm glad I live in a state where there is separation of church and state. A Board of Education fulfills a role by performing five major responsibilities. Number one, setting direction. Number two, establishing an effective and efficient structure. Number three, providing support. Number four, ensuring accountability. Number five, providing community leadership as advocates for children, the school district, and public schools. These five responsibilities represent core functions that are so fundamental to how you, as a governance team with the superintendent, make decisions that best serve the students in BUSD. Establishing an effective and efficient structure requires oversight. This is not something that is handed off to a superintendent and staff without adequate follow-through on your part as good stewards. As you are aware, we have lost a large number of staff across all graded levels. What is the plan to work on retention, compensation, and staff morale? Has this been a part of a plan to ensure accountability? We have also lost some programs, PE in the elementary schools, and the ramifications are still here today. We don't have adequate planning time. Teachers were moved from elementary to middle school to high school. We have to look at our schools. All of our schools are choice. I find that term to be like, it's a school of choice. All of our schools are choice. You're going to have to look at the boundaries, and we're going to have to address that issue that we, that has fed into this, and this has been going on for years. Providing community support requires building and increasing capacity in order to develop and nurture strong partnerships with all our parents. Is the significance of a BUSD public education apparent to all? This has to be a partnership based on trust. Currently, there is not the willingness or trust needed to go forward to work together to find solutions. What is the plan or direction to address safety, discipline issues in our school, and especially what you've heard tonight regarding programs at Luther? I know elections take place in November, but I'm urging you to work together, starting today forward, to address the issues that you have heard tonight. Being a school board member requires knowledge of what is needed to run a district. This is not an entry-level position. There must always be attention to detail and oversight. And so, as always, as I come to this mic, my frustration is, how many times have I come here and asked to be a part of a solution? I've written many emails to this body, and I've probably heard from two, I think Emily and Steve, and Dr. Hill, and the assistant superintendents, all. I've not heard from the rest of you. You are in the position, as our school board president, to show the leadership that is needed. Thank you.
All right. That was our final speaker, so we will now move to staff responses.
Thank you, President Tabit, and thank you to all the speakers tonight, and thank you for everyone else that showed up as well. Since these are not agenda topics, I'm going to keep my comments brief, but I want to make sure we continue the conversation offline in a different setting. But first, for Mr. Arkellian, I respect your First Amendment right. I strongly disagree with everything you had to say tonight, and I'm going to express my First Amendment right as well. I will not go into great details. I just want our LGBTQ families, employees, students, especially our transgender students, to know that we love them, we respect them, we welcome them, we will do everything to make sure every single day they can be their full selves on our campus. I can only imagine what it's like to hear the words you just said for them, and I want them to all know that all of us here at BUSD support them. And second, we will continue to follow science in the Health Department, follow COVID protocols. I completely understand that you have a choice, as a parent, on where you want to send your children, but I just want to be very clear where I stand on both of those topics. Ms. Morrison, I wish you all the best in your adventures, and we do welcome you back when you're ready. I know you have a path that you're following, and hopefully leads back here at BUSD. I'll follow up with Ms. Cut Cut and Mr. Cross on the concerns you have about Disney, and we will walk offline.
I can respond, if that's okay. So the shade structures are going in this Saturday, and the maintenance is being handled by Marina Landscape. They're aware of the brown spots. It does take a while for the roots to establish, but it's under contract, they have 90 days to monitor, and they own it. So if something were to happen to the grass, that, they are responsible, so they would remedy it. As for trees, I'll work with Mr. Cross to make sure that we put in mature trees, so that's it.
Thank you, Ms. Cut Cut. For Jackson and Addison, thank you so much for coming tonight. You have such strong and powerful voices. Your passion, your leadership, your intellect was so evident tonight. I want to continue to have the conversation. I had an opportunity with Dr. Paramo and Ms. Abasta to have a start of one meeting with the staff at Luther. We want to have more meetings. We're going to, we schedule them monthly. If there's opportunities for you to attend those meetings, or have separate meetings with families and students, you have great ideas, you have great vision, we want to be able to incorporate that for both of you. The staff have heard this to me, and I said I'd make a commitment tonight. We have hit a place where Luther, we have to stabilize the decline in enrollment. We've had ideas in the past, we've had different things we've tried, it's clear it hasn't worked, and I hear you loud and clear tonight, I heard it this week, the trust is broken, and we have to regain that. And the only way to regain that is not words tonight on this podium or a microphone, I'm not going to try to do that. I know it has to be the actions that we take when we keep meeting monthly and come together with that plan. So I just want to reiterate what we said, is that we are going to work together monthly in partnership. We're going to look at all the options that we put on the table, we'll analyze that, we will agendize it so we can have a dialogue with the full board and the community, and we'll make sure that happens before the end of this semester. So we had a commitment on Tuesday, I just want to make sure the committee, the community knows that we've made that commitment, and we will work together on enrollment, as well as arts and the programs and the other concerns that you highlighted. I just want to highlight one thing, and there'll be more details coming out that Jackson brought up. PE dance, for middle schools, we had a robust discussion back in 2017 about options for that. At that time, we looked at those options about having a specific PE dance class for 8th graders. The decision was made that we would not do that. We were going to invest in professional development for our current PE teachers, so they can do a dance segment. And so that's when some of the emails people were questioning is, that's the miscommunication, is PE is offered only at the highest level of our choirs, at the high school level, not the middle school level. And so we will continue to have dialogue on that, but right now, we cannot offer that PE dance class at 8th grade. And I know that that's not an answer that everybody wants to hear, it's just not something we have approved at a district and a board level. But I do thank all the speakers tonight, and again, my commitment to continue to work with all of you is sincere, and we will get it done. Thank you.
Moving on then to board members' responses. Mr. Fritner.
Thank you to everyone for coming out tonight. I'm glad we had the motion to move this forward, because we do appreciate the long day you've already had to put in, and we've got students here as well, so I think it was the right motion to make, so.
Thank you.
Mr. Arkellian, you came up here and gave us a long definition of truth, and then you can proceeded to spill anything but truth. You started with saying truth should be based on the Word of God. Well, which God? Because there's a lot of them that are worshiped, and they don't always agree on things, so that's a fault right there. You tore into the LGBTQ community, most specifically transgender individuals, and I've lost my temper before on this subject, so I'm trying not to do it again. We will never roll back any support, any protections that we have put in for LGBTQ students, not if I have anything to say about it. They need to be supported, they need to be protected, and we are going to continue to do that. And if that means we lose you and some other parents from the district, then that's what we're going to have to face. But we are, this is going to be a district that welcomes everyone and tries to do everything we can to support everyone, and that's been a challenge over time. And we keep working to try and make it better, but we're not going backwards. And as far as the COVID recommendations, again, yes, we follow the science. You seem to think everything in the government is some sort of cabal. I'm sorry, I follow, I believe in the science, and that's why I'm hoping our district will continue to follow. Ms. Morrison, thank you. One school I did get a chance to visit this week, the first day of school was Disney, and while it looks great, yes, there is a lot left, and there are punchless items that we knew weren't going to be completed, but we wanted to make sure the classrooms were going to be ready to be inhabitable, you know, come the first day of school. Thank you, Ms. Cut Cut, for the updates on the shade structure for the play equipment. I noticed, as you did, that some of the grass was brown already, which it's odd, we're like, but, you know, we are going to be following up. The trees are going to be a challenge. Yes, we want to make sure that the brand-new asphalt we put in isn't going to be broken up by roots, as we've seen consistently, but there are ideas about, you know, using planters, and there are some varieties of trees that still can be full-size and still sit in those. There was someone this week, we actually even asked and- There was someone this week who I actually even asked, and I was going to bring this up to Mr. Cross, if we can put those on rollers, that they might be able to move them around. I don't know if that's practical or a safety issue, but that's something we might also consider. So, and we miss you also, and, yes, and we hope you're back with us sometime soon. The rest of our speakers, Ms. Abasta, you've touched on a lot of subjects, but we're mainly supporting, I think, the rest of our speakers who are here to speak about Luther. Addison and Jackson, thank you. Students, it's, I know it's always a challenge coming up to speak in public for adults, it is, and you both did great, and it's great to hear very specifically from students about how this affects them, you know, and how they're feeling. Jackson talked very specifically about the mental health issues, and we know this has been a challenge. So thank you for highlighting that while you were speaking. Mrs. Lefredo, in your remarks, mentioned that the point twos we've been able to add is a Band-Aid. I agree, actually. It is something we can do now, at least, and there were several people who had mentioned that we've been reactive and not proactive, and I think we have to say maybe that's the case, and maybe we need to be better at that. And not maybe, we need to be better at that. The enrollment issues, we've seen coming from years, the superintendent mentioned, there's been some ideas, but none of them taken hold yet. We will have to be more proactive in trying to solve that. I agree with you, Ms. Abasta, this isn't, I'm not, you mentioned the elections coming. I'm not planning on coasting. I made the announcement last week. That doesn't mean I take the next three months off, three and a half months off. There's work to still be done, and if you're sitting up here on the dais, it's your responsibility to still do it. So I agree with you, and I agree we need to continue to look for partnerships, to work together, to rebuild trust, and I plan on doing that. I'm sorry if we haven't connected as much, and you're right, I haven't always responded. You don't email me as much, but I probably haven't been as responsive either, so I will work to improve that. To the Luther staff, I know a lot of you because there's probably not a school, as board members, we're supposed to represent every school, and we try to, but we all identify with some. Some of my fellow board members grew up in Burbank and attended schools here. There's probably not a school in Burbank that I identify with more than Luther. Both my children attended there. I was PTA president there for two years. I was heavily involved during the other six years my students were there. I agree with you that Luther is every bit the school that our other middle schools are. I think the staff there has been fantastic over the years, both those of you I know and those of you who have come since my children left, which has been a number of years. We've got great programs there. We've got, and I, I won't, I will make it part of my duty to make sure that we are moving forward on this, because Luther is just as important to our district as the other middle schools and all the rest of the schools, and I want to see, I want to see it succeed and not keep fading away. And I don't, by the way, I don't think it's been fading away. The enrollment level's been fading away. The school hasn't been fading away. You guys have been doing fantastic. So I'm glad we've had the, you know, there's initial discussions that have been happening. I really want to, to make sure that continues, because we do need to support the school and make sure that it is, it continues to be the gem that it always has been. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Fritner. Dr. Aga Khanian.
Thank you, Madam President. I want to start by thanking Addison and Jackson. And as we speak right now, our son is practicing piano. Music is something that runs in our house. I play instruments. I know I'm known to be the famous DJ, but I grew up around music. I danced. It's mandatory where I come from in my education system. I know the value of art, and if you're on my house and you hear drone backpipes, which dogs really don't like, that's me. I play ancient instruments. I collect them. I even do a presentation called The Silk Road, which shows how we are connected through I hear you, and I do also agree with my colleague, all of our schools are important, but I also want to assure you that I'm here, and we're going to figure this out, and if you need to get ahold of me, you can call me. And then, speaking of our house and our son practicing piano as we speak, I do have a sign in front of my front lawn that says, "Hate has no place at this home." I have been a victim many, many times of discrimination. Even when I ran as a candidate, I was discriminated heavily. My house got egged three times when I was a candidate. But also, I'm someone who left my country very early, spent time in refugee camps, six months alone in one, being locked up. I know what it means to be discriminated against, and I've made it my lifelong commitment to make sure this will never happen to anyone again. So you have the right to talk about the truth, but the truth of the matter is that we live in a very diverse community, and everyone is welcome here. So if you don't have one of those signs, you can get them from the Human Coalition right here. Put it in your front lawn. I've had it up there for almost eight years now, and all my neighbors know that hate has no place in my home. To Ms. Morrison, good to see you. So I do want to share with you that my colleague and I have founded the District Environmental Action Committee. We just had our first meeting, and part of the conversation is about how we can, Ms. Weisberg, by the way, and I, Dr. Weisberg, sorry. So we have been talking about green spaces, you know, and how we can really improve some of these concerns you have, and I'm looking forward for the committee to start really, you know, talk about how we can create these shades, whether it's through trees or some creative ways, but also to get, try to get rid of some of that black, you know. You know, there was a great study just came out that shows how much warmer our cities are getting just because of everything you just talked about. It's a big, big concern. This committee is there. We're talking about not only recycling, we're talking about community gardens, school gardens, how we can also create, you know, environments at our college, at our schools that provide natural shade, and really to get creative. So if anyone is interested, you know, you can be part of this committee that's already, you know, is being enthusiastically supported, not only by our parents, but also by the district and by my colleague and myself and all the board here. So I hope we can come out also with some creative solutions. And last but not least, also, you know, when we talk about art and music also, you know, I also want us to start really get creative in terms of how we can generate additional funding, talking to our studios. I know you talked about Disney and Warner Brothers and everyone being here. Well, I think we need to start also looking at the opportunities and showcase all the wonderful things we're doing. I don't think we're getting as much of a fair share to support our programs from some of these businesses as much as we should be, and I think there is an opportunity to talk more about this, but I think, you know, that's something that, again, we can talk more about. We do have the, you know, our nonprofits out there, but at the same time, I want to make sure that you understand that, you know, for me, when it comes to music, it's also very personal, you know. Music was my ticket out when I was dealing with depression, when I was sitting alone by myself, not knowing where I'm going to end up the next day. Music was my solution when I didn't know if I was going to be alive in the morning as bombs were raining on us at night. My grandmother's humming and singing traditional Armenian songs was my soothing when I was scared to death, because you ever never experienced being bombed, but you don't know if you're going to wake up the next morning alive. So it's been in my family, it runs in my blood, and I'm going to make sure that we continue these programs. And I want to thank all of our teachers and, you know, parents and Addison and Jackson for being here tonight. I hear you loud and clear. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Dr. Weisberg.
Thank you so much. Thank you to everybody. Work a little bit backwards here. If you see me typing during meetings, I'm taking notes. I'm not doing other things, so please don't think that I am. I want to make sure I pronounce. Hold on, please. Mr. Arakalian, am I pronouncing that correctly? You said something in the very beginning that I thought was really important. You talked about how truth is truth whether you believe it or not. I think in the last five or six years, we've learned that truth is supremely subjective. I feel like most of the time, we live in a post-truth world, where people get to decide what science they believe and decide what research they believe. If you're interested, I'd love to send you an article written by the Harvard University, their Graduate School of Arts and Sciences, and they write really powerfully about the science behind transgender identity. Now, you don't have to believe it personally, that doesn't make it untrue. So our job as board members, our job as members of this school district, is to lift up, support, elevate, and make sure all of our students see themselves in what we teach, that they are honored for who they are every day in the classroom, and when that's not happening, we adjust the way that we teach and the way that we engage with our students and faculty to make sure that they are. And that means different religions, that means different ethnicities, that means different gender expressions and gender identity, all of which are true. You don't have to like it, but you do have to respect it, and if you don't, as my colleague, Mr. Fritner, said, maybe it is not the best place for you. Now, I would imagine that your children, who are fantastic, I'm sure, would learn an enormous amount being in such a diverse, exciting, creative environment as Burbank unified, and I hope that they'll stay, and I hope that they'll meet lots of different people and learn lots and have their minds expanded in lots of really important ways. But I did want to reiterate, because we do have students who watch and students who are here, that our unwavering commitment to every single student in BUSD and our teachers and our families is concrete and unwavering, and the work that we do to make sure they feel seen and supported will continue in perpetuity. Additionally, our commitment to science, to research, to the CDC and to the LA County Health Department remains unwavering. It sounds like there might be, again, I'm happy to send you some links about the airborne transmission of COVID, but our job is to keep all of our students, staff, teachers, everybody as safe as possible mentally, emotionally, and physically, and that commitment, I think I speak for all of us when I say, will not cease. To, all my notes. It was really fantastic to spend some time with everybody at Luther. Thank you for not throwing things at me. It was very nice of you, and for sharing your donuts. I want to talk a little bit about something that Mr. Fritner brought up, which is about being proactive and not reactive. Obviously, the issue with enrollment didn't start this year, didn't start last year. I'm not exactly sure when it started, and we know that COVID did contribute to that. But what I'm trying to think about, and in conversations with you and in conversations with Dr. Hill and Dr. Paramo, who have graciously given me a bunch of time this week, is what could we have done differently and what can we do differently? And so for me, the areas that we need to be focusing on are feeder schools and which schools are choice schools. So when we talk about our larger elementary schools, right, when we talk about Washington and Edison, where are they feeding into? And also talking about inter-district permits, right, and whether or not we say, okay, well, we're going to look at this school and this school, these schools have the lowest enrollment, let's make sure that we get those students there. So I think that the onus is on us to make sure that we are finding solutions and you're not scrambling to make up for losing staff and trying to sort of cover all of the bases all at once. So for me, I'm really trying to think about, as a district, as the board, what can we do concretely to address this? And I feel like those are two things, in talking with Dr. Paramo and talking with Dr. Hill, that we can do, that we can look at, so that proactively, we can see these schools are struggling with some enrollment. What can we put into place right now, over the summer, this year, so that next year enrollment looks different? So I mean, I will make that commitment to you, again, concrete solutions that we do early on so that we can address these problems. Is it always, is it going to fix everything? I don't know. I don't know yet, but I definitely think it can make a difference, and I take full responsibility, I don't want to speak for anybody else, for not being more proactive. So I want to, I want to say that those are two things that I'm going to be looking into and obviously defer to the experts in the room about how we do that and the best ways to do that. I also hear the concern about the art classes and not being taught by art teachers. I think everybody acknowledges, especially in what, in your comments that you read, this may take a little bit of time to fix, but what it sounds like, more than anything, you need to hear, well, there's not more than anything, but one of the things is that we're making a solid commitment to you that we are going to address this. I think the good news is it's addressable. We just need to, we need to figure it out. So I hope that you will hold us accountable. I know. I will always, when I'm not, you know, I've been happy that I haven't been, I'm not back at school yet, so I was able to hang out a bunch last week, but I'll take a day off, I'll do what I need. Let us know. We will, we will show up, we will talk with you. You know how to get in touch with us. I respond to every email that I get. It may take me a few days, but I do. So hold us accountable. Let us know if the things that we're trying are succeeding or not, but these aren't just words, as Dr. Hill said. I mean, we, I'm committed to these actions. So I wanted to say that to all of you. I want to talk a little bit about how cool Jackson's hair is, just for like a quick second. I'm done now, but that's it. It's cool. It's so cool. To Jackson and Addison, so you guys coming up here and advocating like you did is unbelievably powerful. Even if we can't fix everything right away, I want you to know that your advocacy still worked, and you should keep showing up. Oftentimes, when you really, really want something changed, it might not happen that first time. Come back. Write us an email. Call us up. Come back again. Mr. Ferguson and I are working on our Student Advisory Council that we're going to be rolling out in a couple of months, and we hope you'll be involved in that, so we can hear from students directly about the things that we should be focused on. So I don't, if things aren't fixed right away, I don't want you to think, nobody listened to us. We're just kids. We heard you, we are hearing you, and we are working on it, but come back and tell us something else that's going on. Let us know if you like the direction it's going in, but know that you were heard. Really, really important. Just sometimes it takes longer than we all want it to take. Oh, about dance and PE. So huge thanks to Dr. Paramo today. I sat down, I said, please explain all the things to me. And one of the things that he helped me understand, and some of the responses to the emails I got today, I wrote about this, but one of the things that I didn't know about is this federal program monitoring process, which is, it's exciting as it sounds, guys, so get pumped. I'm going to go, I'll go fast. But they sort of surprise audit school districts, and we don't know which classes they're auditing, which programs, they just show, because that's why auditing is successful, right? They show up. And so two years ago, is that right, Dr. Paramo? Two years ago... Two years ago, they audited our PE classes. And what came out of that auditing process is the sort of dance as PE is only, is it per, is only, yeah, high school. So the high school dance choirs. So we don't have the freedom, as Dr. Hill said, we can't do it in middle school. Like, we're literally not allowed. Now, I think that's something we could have done a better job of explaining. And as I said to some of you, I don't think we're, I don't know where that miscommunication happened. I can't speak to that. I know that's not a satisfying response. I don't know. But what I do know is that there is a reason, but we should have done a better job of explaining it. And I'm thankful to Dr. Paramo for walking me through that because I certainly didn't understand that. So that's an important piece. Sometimes we can't do the things we want to do, even if we want to do them. And I imagine, Jackson and Addison, and you can correct me if I'm wrong, that it feels even more like heavy on top of art. So it's like first the art and then PE, and your schedule's changed a bunch. So it's a good lesson for me, again, in communication and in making sure, like, it was important for me to sit down with Dr. Paramo today and say, can you help me understand this? So I appreciate all of you pushing me to ask more questions. Sometimes I don't know the right questions to ask. So that was helpful for me to know. And I wanted to share that with you just because I thought it was useful. Dr. Hill?
Sorry. I'm out of protocol, but I just wanted to clarify on that. We would need board approval to be able to do it. So you can do eighth grade dance. We did, before you were on the board, we did a study session with the board at the time about, do we have PE? Do we have teacher residence?
Oh, I thought it was, okay.
So in order, you just can't do it without us having a formal process and being very clear about the curriculum and getting approved by the board. So I just wanted to clarify.
And am I right, then, when it came in front of us last board meeting, it just said PE, right?
So there's two parts. There's, you can do committee on assignment to allow a teacher to teach one section of something, but offering a dance class in eighth grade for PE credit is a different approval. So it's two approval processes.
Right. So a lot of people wrote, oh, but the board approved it. And I want to be clear that what we saw in the approval, it said physical education. It didn't say physical education with a dance emphasis, and then we turned around. So that's important. So again, it seemed like I wasn't clear. Helpful information. So, but it sounds like it's a conversation that we can continue to have, which is better than I thought it was 30 seconds ago. Yeah, so I think, so I think that that's it. I did want to just very quickly, I swear the last thing is just a huge thank you this week to everybody. I did want to give a special shout out to our IT team, who dealt with an unbelievably insane first week of school. They were there till 2:33 in the morning, came back, came back at 6:00 in the morning to make sure that they could attack these issues to our teachers, to our, I think some of us here got to go serve lunch in a couple of different places this week. A huge shout out to our food service staff. The need was absolutely there, and now I cut pizza like a boss. Yeah. I mean, just consistently amazed by the commitment. I mean, the fact that everybody here showed up. You gave your time up on a Thursday night. As a middle school teacher, I understand how tired you are. So, but to me, what this shows me more than anything is how deep the love for Luther goes, how deep the love for this district goes. We're very lucky to have that, and I don't want to take advantage of it. So thank you to everybody for being here.
Thank you, President Tabit. Where to begin? The kids. Okay. First thing, Addison, hi there. Leadership is hard, and I think a big part of leadership that I've learned is being accountable, right? So you came and you told me, along with everybody else here, how much I've impacted you, how much I've let you down. I'm sorry. I'm sorry. It's a stressful world, and pile it on top is not. It wasn't my intention, but I probably should have asked more questions. So I own that. I think, are you good? I'm sorry it impacted your experience. It sounds like the district is paying attention now, because you have backup. But so are we. I don't want these conversations to disappear to untelevised rooms where promises can be made and not kept. I see the deficit in trust here. I see it with our cafeteria workers. We weren't serving lunches last year because we had enough people. Maybe we didn't actually. Or the year prior to that, our custodial teams have said the same thing. And I've been to Luther, and it's a beautiful campus, and you guys are doing amazing things there, because I saw the energy the first day with the kiddos. But that grass is long. And there are cobwebs, not for a lack of love on the part of the team that's working so hard. Because let me just tell you, as I went to go see the cafeteria workers, I ran into one of our custodians there, and he was busting his tail to try and get things moved. So it's not for a lack of effort. This community needs to see the impacts, and it's our job to tell that story as leaders, as that bridge between the institution and our community. We've tried with parcel taxes, we've tried with a number of things, but more than anything, we should be trying with proactive thinking, with thinking outside the box. To this community, I will say, years ago, three-ish years ago, I was trying to establish an additional pathway at Luther and worked very hard. It was not the right time, potentially, for that pathway to be developed, and I understand that. But I was doing something to try and bring additional enrollment to a school that I saw had a ton to offer and wasn't connecting with the community in that way. I tried. And I'm committed to still thinking outside the box so that we can do this. I think that changing district boundaries, those are all good conversations. I think those are right. But this is only happening to one school right now. And why? Why?
That's what we want to know.
Well, so do I. And I'll be asking a lot of questions because I've already let one kid down. Jackson, you did so great. I mean, I am, I was so impressed by both students, you know? Our mission on full display, right? Like, you go run the parcel tax campaign, let people say no. And more than anything, what I heard from a lot of your story, and again, if there's a pathway to bring dance back, let's do it, you know? And the other thing is, is that we've been doing education one way for quite a long time. But it's pretty clear since the pandemic that choose your own adventure is kind of the best way for engagement purposes, you name it. And so maybe not all schools can offer dance. Maybe we don't have the resources for that. But maybe we can talk about transportation to get the kids with dance over to those schools so that they can. Maybe we can start developing a model that's a little outside the box so we can figure it out. And I get told no all the time, but when I get told yes, that's a win, and we can deliver for kids like you. I'm really happy that the arts, in a time that was pretty hard for you, losing your grandparent, was there for you. And I hope it continues to be there, not just now, but for years to come, because it's pretty clear how much passion it brings to you. So I'm really proud of you. I care a lot, sorry. This is me. To our Luther community generally, accountability, yes. A plan, yes. So I would like a plan before end of semester. So I would like a plan in 60 days. That doesn't mean we've had time to necessarily check in with all of you on this, but I would like a draft of a plan together in 60 days so that if we need to make changes, we can do that at the semester so that we're not overburdening our counseling team to try and switch up and change and manage all these schedules, in addition to our teachers and our support staff, who then have to make adjustments, catch kids up, and you name it. So I would like to get that in place. I would like to get that in place so that we can communicate effectively and we can start this next semester on a different foot. That's a hard metric. I would like to push for it. I hope my colleagues will join me in that. I will continue to be present on campus in what ways I can and stop by. Please feel free to engage, like many of you have, and I am committed to that. And thanks for giving us a second chance, frankly. To Mr. Araucalion, first things first, full disclosure, I'm gay. But when I hear you, I hear fear that you have for your child's safety and well-being. I don't agree that you should be fearful of some of these things, but I'm not here to change your mind. I do want to give you a little context and a little history, not to lecture, but to inform. In 2013, Assembly Bill 1266 was passed into law by the state of California, and that ensured all students, based off of the gender that they identify as, could participate in sports and could use the restroom of their choice. This was passed into law by the legislature. It was signed into law by the governor, and now it is the law of the land. In 2014, there was an effort to gather signatures through the public process to remove this as a law in the state of California. That effort failed. As a result, that framework still stands. And so here in Burbank Unified School District, that law will continue to carry forward, and I agree with that law. I am really sorry that this causes you fear in your life. I don't want that. And I can tell you, as a member of the LGBT community, I want a happy future for your kid, and I don't want, I don't want them living in fear, you know? And I don't want anything to happen to them. That's why I ran. So I know you have some examples that have demonstrated your concern. Those are valid, but just like stereotypes don't apply to everybody, right? Not to you. They don't apply to me, and they don't apply to my community. And for a lot of those students, just like in moments when you felt maybe alienated or alone, this room may have conveyed a little bit of that. Those kids are feeling that way, too. And these laws are designed to make sure that they feel like they belong. Because what we were finding is, is that when they don't feel like they belong, the overwhelming statistics show that they kill themselves. And God is life. And those kids, I want those kids to choose life. And I know you're an ally in that. So I appreciate your concerns. I don't agree with them in all regards, but I remain an ally to you, that you can reach out to if I can ever provide information or talk. I'm here. On COVID-19, I'm a little bit more proactive. I do do a little bit of the walk in other people's shoes. I think about people like Rosemary Morrison, who talked about her child, other children who are immunocompromised. And you reference, like, a 70-year-old, and, you know, and I get that. And that's not every child. And we've seen that COVID does not impact every child. But as a leader, I find it really hard to pick one, which one it should, you know? And which, which child should be negatively impacted and overly severe. And I am very proud of this board because out of COVID, we didn't lose a single kid. And that took work, and it took being unpopular at times. I get the disagreement. I get the inconvenience. I get the distraction. You're sitting in a room with a bunch of people who, I think, for over a year, were saying, pull up your mask, pull up your mask, pull up your mask. But I, I support this path forward because I think it's how we keep all kids safe. And I support the measures that we've put in place because that's how I think we can keep our campus community safe. So as you're an elected leader, I owe you justifications for things, and those are mine. To Ms. Morrison, I'm really, you know, from where you started on public comment about Disney Construction to now, brings me great joy, and that without a doubt is a testament to Ms. Cuckta, to Mr. Cross, to the countless number of folks who were working on this. And trust me, I mean, I was blowing up Ms. Cuckta's phone, email, you name it, to say, let's go, let's go, let's move. What's the plan? Let's communicate. Let's go. And she was always a partner in that. And you were always a partner in giving us, frankly, see what happens. They do give a second chance as we work on it. But I'm happy to hear that. We also have, like, watering restrictions. There's a number of things contributing, obviously, to, you know, landscaping going sideways. Having said that, noted on the shade, I'm happy to hear about that coming into place this summer. I'm sorry, sorry, Saturday. Thank you very much, Dr. Neiman. Yeah. Woo, almost lost that there. So, and then more mature trees, I think, is well-founded and fine, as long as there's cement in case, so that way they don't, they don't do the root thing and make that happen. So anyway, so thank you for that. I'm sorry you are no longer with our, with us. Having said that, you know, this is all, education's always an adventure, and I really hope your path brings you back. So with that, last statement is just to the LGBTQ community. You are seen, you are loved, you are beautiful. And I don't think anybody could, you know, attempted or intended to communicate otherwise. But what I will say is that allyship should not be performative. We should believe in allyship. We should believe in belonging, whether we're on camera, whether there's a million people in this audience, or whether there is no one. And I am sorry. I have seen the performative allyship take root in a lot of ways, including with some of my colleagues. We owe it to these kids to create safe spaces. And that means talking about them the same way in public as we do behind closed doors. And it means really loving people for who they are, no matter their views, no matter their values. This is a public institution, and we're taxpayer-funded to take care of everyone. Thank you.
Sometimes it's hard to be the last person to speak because everyone has said such heartfelt and thoughtful words. And then you get to number five, and you're like, okay, what are you, what are you, what are you going to tell us now? I have to agree with so much that was said, and I'm speaking right now to the Luther teachers. I met with, this past week, two teachers who wanted to talk about inclusiveness in the district across the board, about how their thoughts and feelings were, wouldn't it be an incredible place to be if all groups worked together for the common thought of we're making BUSD, no matter what school site you were at, an amazing place to be? And I was like, yeah, that's great. Awesome. Let's, let's work on that. Let's do that, so that all groups were working together for the betterment of Jackson and Addison. You know, that was the bottom line. And I was so excited to walk away, and, and then I realized that sometimes I make dumb mistakes, and I forget that we're dealing with a Jackson and an Addison, and that the number on the page doesn't always matter, that Jackson and Addison matter. And so you get caught up in, well, my role in a board member is to make sure that, you know, we have a budget to adhere to and to, you know, get people adequate compensation. And how do we get to that point? And how do we make sure we provide, you know, without lawsuits and things? And you get in this, in this bad habit, and you forget that, at the end of the day, you need to make decisions that are good for Addison and Jackson. And so that's what you coming in, and not just coming in and saying, for, and by the way, thank you so much for coming in as a group and having a speaker, share your thoughts. That's an amazing thing, because it's, it, sometimes your thoughts after person 22, you know, gets a little lost, but your message was loud and clear. And what you said is what those two folks came to me to say, is we need to work together on this. We're not just going to come in and complain to you. We're going to come in and say, here's our problem, here's some ideas on how to fix it. come in and say, 'Here's our problem. Here's some ideas on how to fix it. Now let's work together to make sure that happens.'" And I heard from Dr. Hill that he wants to meet on a regular basis with Dr. Paramo and work through the things that we need to do, all of us, together, so that Addison and Jackson don't have to come to a board meeting to say, "I'm disappointed." And so I'm hoping that I can take that original meeting with those two, and we can walk forward and have this happen together. Like Mr. Ferguson said, owe you an apology. Mrs. LaFredo, owe you an apology. I owe Jackson and Addison one, too, because I need to remember that those numbers are them, and they matter. And so I'm gonna make sure, as best I can. You can all poke back at me if you're like, "Oh, you're a little bit back in the weeds with that budget again. Make sure you're paying attention to Addison and Jackson." Call me out. That's perfectly fine. You have every right to. And so I'm glad you all came tonight, took time. Isn't the first week of school, Ralph? It is so tiring. So thank you so much for coming out tonight and reminding us that we all have a job to do together. And working together is a lot stronger and a lot better than working separately. We'll never get up that hill by ourselves. It's something we all have to work on. So thank you for taking time out to come and remind us. And I do really, really like to see folks and hear folks. Your message comes across really well in person, so I appreciate that. Thank you. Thank you so much. And I know Dr. Hill and staff that we're gonna work through this as best we can. So I, even though...okay, they're right. Jackson, I've been dying to put the oil colors in my hair, but, you know...yeah. So yours looks awesome. I appreciate it. Thank you. Let's see. Mrs. Morrison, we've been through a lot with Disney and on the reconstruction. Let's, you know, and I think we've come a long way. I was really excited to see, after a couple of, you know, weeks away, to pop by, and there was a whole new school, almost. So I think, given a little bit of time, and our staff here at the district has been phenomenal. Our facilities guys and ladies, sorry, have been picking up the pieces where they can, where they're able, and putting that project together as best, so that on opening day there was asphalt for kids to walk across, be it hot, to get to those new classrooms. Because, boy, I showed up one day, and there was a mound of dirt in the middle of the yard, and I thought, "Oh, man, this needs to get fixed really fast, because if teachers see this, there's...it's not gonna be good." And they did. It was gone within a week, and the blacktop got in. And so I don't know if you've ever done construction at your house, right? It seems like it goes bam, and then the little fix-it stuff, the...what do they call that list? The punch list takes a while. So we'll make it perfect. And I agree with you. Nice, mature trees in cement containers works really well. Good shade and better safety for the kids, so we don't break up the asphalt and they trip and fall. So that's an important thing. Yeah, I think, really, it's great and important that you all come out and say what you have to say. I love to visit classrooms, so I may...I always hear from teachers, "Just come in, just come in, just come on." So, "I'm coming. Okay, I'm coming." And thank you so much for your night tonight. Thank you to my colleagues, to everyone who spoke up. And that's it. We'll move on with the meeting. Thank you very much. And if you need to leave because you're exhausted...
Have a good night. Thank you.
Have a good night. We're gonna go back now?
Are they...
No, I didn't. We'll keep moving. It's okay. You were right, Dr. Weisberg. Thank you.
Thank you.
You're welcome. We're gonna go back to 9A?
Yes.
Which...oh, 8.
8.
Reports from the board? Did you have more?
We don't have any this night...we don't have any items to number 8, but we can start...
Oh, presentations and recognitions, number 9. So 9A is Los Angeles Valley College update. We have Dr. Gribbins, the president of LA Valley College, who will be giving us an update on LA Valley College, LAVC, and Los Angeles Community College, LACC. Sir, welcome.
Thank you. What a beautiful, rich conversation. And I just want to begin by expressing gratitude for not immediately following Addison and Jackson.
Never is.
Yeah, thank you for that. But really, what a beautiful job. And it's really neat to see democracy in action, all of you taking the public comment.
When you see kids like Addison...I'm sorry to interrupt, but when you see kids like Addison and Jackson come through here, doesn't it, like, the hope for the future just expands? And you're like, "All right, my college is gonna be okay."
Oh, absolutely.
It's awesome.
The next generation is beautiful. It's gonna be amazing, and I'm ready to hire them to do our state and federal advocacy right away.
Plus, they don't have to pay for tuition right now if they come as a new student, right, at Valley College?
That's right. It'll be free. It'll be...no enrollment fees for them. Thank you for that plug. I am joined by Dr. Matt Jordan, our vice president of academic affairs. Anything I mess up, Matt's gonna correct for me, and then he'll add some additional comments. Can you see the...yeah, there we go. If you haven't been to campus lately, please do give me a buzz and come by, because it has changed quite a bit in the last couple of years. It really is nothing like it was 10 or 15 years ago, for sure. But I'd welcome to give you a little bit of a tour. I'll make a few comments about the campus and about the programs, and of course, welcome any questions you might have. And I promise you I'm hitting the button, but...let me try this one. Yep, that one works beautifully. So as you know, if you've been on campus before, beautiful park-like setting. We're known as the Tree Campus. We're actually recognized as a Tree Campus, one of the first California Community College. We have a lot of programs to choose from, 195 associates and certificate programs. And we have the Promise Program. Dual enrollment, students don't pay any enrollment fees, but even after students graduate, they can come to us free for the first two years through the Promise Program. And there's no cap. There's no limitation. Only the first 100. It's unlimited, so it's really neat to be able to offer that. The communities that we serve, of course, Burbank is an important community for us. And then we go westward to Baboa and up to Panorama and down to essentially Mulholland Drive. One other thing that's kind of unique about Valley, we're the only college that has a planetarium and an observatory in LA County. So that's kind of unique, and it's really an amazing facility. We do have some public shows, and we use the facilities all the time for our instructional program. But once a month, we also have some public shows, which are really neat, and we'll make sure we get you information about that, too. One thing that's unique about Valley is our collection of support programs. We have an amazing collection of programs that we're incredibly proud of, including the Dream Resource Center, Emotional Black Scholars Program. We're just opening up our Rainbow Pride Center that we're absolutely thrilled about. We have a wonderful Guardian Scholars Program for our foster youth, Former Foster Youth Veteran Resource Center, EOPS, SSD, Students with Disabilities, and Family Resource Center. We're actually one of the only colleges that have a Family Resource Center. It's a place for our student parents. As many of you know, the odds of a teen parent going on and completing college is unfortunately really, really, really rare, and that's why we started the Family Resource Center to support them. We have a Helping Hands Center, who loves to find any way to help people, find any needs that folks have. We also just hired a basic needs counselor, so that's kind of neat to help our homeless students, housing insecure students, food insecure students, making sure that they have resources, which I just saw somebody yesterday that we were able to connect. Trio Puente, of course, financial aid, free tutoring. We have a Study Away Program, Study Abroad Program. We just had a group of students off in Spain this summer. Absolutely amazing experience. TAP honors, especially designed to help students who want to transfer to UCLA. Full disclosure, I'm a Trojan, but UCLA...but I also worked at UCLA, too. It's a fine college. And of course, Phi Theta Kappa Athletics. We are looking to do some expansion in athletics as well. We have a history of having amazing athletics programs, and we want to bring...we want to add a few more. Switching over a little bit to specifically dual enrollment, and this connects in meaningful ways with Burbank. We really appreciate the partnership with Burbank Unified. You are amazing partners, and we're deeply appreciative. Our shared vision is to make sure that dual enrollment's available to everybody, not just to the honor student or a select few, but everybody has access to dual enrollment, so that they know that they can go on to college. And then we've taken that vision...
Yeah, don't worry.
Good. Vision just shut down for a second. We take that, yeah, we take that a step forward. We are looking intentionally, working with you on intentionally designing specific pathways. One is, of course, for folks who want to transfer to four-year universities, so having the dual enrollment focus on CSU, GE, and Agnes courses, but also looking at other pathways that are more career-focused, and making sure that our courses are well-aligned with yours, and perhaps providing a capstone experience. You have amazing programs, a collection of programs, so it's really neat to have those deep conversations. And most recently, we're in some important conversations about establishing an early college high school model, early culture, middle college, high school model with you all. I'm excited about that. I'm excited about doing it in unique and innovative ways. I think it's gonna be a great attraction for many parents to want to come to your school district as well. And then, of course, we're thinking about how to make sure that we're connected with your parents and getting information out about the opportunities in dual enrollment, and ensuring that students don't only have access to dual enrollment, but we help them, support them in completing. Now, your kids don't have much of a problem with that. I'm gonna show you some data on that. Your success rates are really high, 94% overall success rate for dual enrollment classes. I wish our native students had a success rate of 94%. It's not that high. But your students are doing really well. Nonetheless, we don't want to take that for granted. We want to make sure that Monterey and everyone has access to these programs and are supported by them. So it's gonna be fun work to continue to do. Dual enrollment has been doing really well, even despite the pandemic. We have been looking at growing it, and it wasn't necessarily easy to keep the dual enrollment program strong during the pandemic, but us working together so well, we have been able to make sure that it continues to thrive, and we're appreciative of that. This gives you a little bit of a sense of some common dual enrollment courses. And just a moment to share a little bit about the outreach vision. So you all already have an incredible college going right, and we want to make sure that we're doing everything that we can to help support you in that. Our commitment is to help you all with FAFSA completion for any students that you might want support with that. We're happy to send our outreach and financial aid team over to help students with completing the FAFSA, the CCC Apply. Having senior days, we are working with our district to change the enrollment time period, so we can start fall enrollment earlier and help students before they leave high school with enrollment. So it starts early, perhaps in October, looking at FAFSA, getting the financial aid paperwork squared away. And I should say FAFSA or California Dream Act for our dreamers. And then making sure they have their college application done, whichever college they want to go to. Of course, I'd prefer they go to Valley. And then helping them with the enrollment process before they leave high school. That's a quick overview, but I'd love to entertain any questions that you might have. And again, I just want to express gratitude for the partnership that we have with Burbank Unified, and hopefully we'll have you over to our campus sometime and give you a bit of a tour.
Okay. I just have a clarification question. You talk about helping students with FAFSA, but we also talked about...
College Promise.
Sorry, yes. So do they need to apply for financial aid in order to get the free first two years?
We do have them complete the FAFSA paperwork with the Promise Program, though it's not income-qualified. Everyone is part of Promise, and everyone who's part of...can be part of Promise. Everyone who is part of Promise will have their first two years of enrollment fees waived. FAFSA might make some other resources available to them, though. So we have them complete the FAFSA to see what other resources they can access. We also want to make sure they're connected with our financial aid folks, because we have hundreds of scholarships through the LAVC Foundation that we want to make sure that students have access to as well.
That was a great question. Thank you.
Thank you. I'm glad it's been recorded.
Right. You can blurb that all over the place. There you go. Dr. Weisberg, you hit...
Yeah, before, but it's kind of related to your comments. Just to be clear, also, now, a new bill also passed that returning students are also...it's free for them, right?
Yes. It doesn't have to be recent high school graduates. It's for any new student. Yeah. And I should have asked Dr. Jordan to add some additional comments. Do you have anything I might have missed?
Oh, sorry. Well, I'll just reiterate some of the things that Dr. Gribbins said. You know, I've worked two miles from here for 10 years, and I live a couple of miles here from here for the last 20 years. So Burbank feels like my community. And, you know, I think everyone at Valley, we consider Burbank our community. So this program for us is something that we don't take for granted. It's a way that we can achieve our mission by serving your students. Those success rates that Dr. Gribbins mentioned, they're astounding, and they're a testament to the work that your teachers and staff do for your students. So really, really impressive. I want to thank Sharon and Matt. They've been wonderful partners in imagining the possibilities for this program. I expect in the near future that we will have class offerings available, so that the student that wants to complete all of their general education requirements will be able to do that before they graduate from BUSD. Yeah, thank you.
Thanks, Pat.
Are you ready, Dr. Weisberg?
I'm totally ready all the time. I had a question. So you talked about, like, the FAFSA workshops. One of the things that we've been talking about in the district is how to better prepare our students for when they do apply, especially with the removal of a lot of the standardized testing and then the essay becoming more important. So do you offer other resources to help students get ready for that transition?
That's a great question. And, you know, perhaps it's something that we should look at a little bit more closely. For us, we accept the top 100%, so there's no essay required to come to Valley College.
That's right.
But we can look at different options for students who want to go straight to the four-year universities and how to support them, too. Perhaps there's some additional supports. And then, of course, I glossed over this, but we have created a College 101 course to help students with that transition. That one's been wildly popular, too, so it's gonna be another great opportunity.
That was my next question.
Yeah, but thank you for that idea.
Mr. Ferguson?
Thank you very much. So first things first, I thank you for the partnership. I have... met you before in my other life. I'm the district director for the Assembly Member who represents your area. And let me just say, through that experience and through that job, I've really gotten to know Valley much better. And it is truly, I mean, a gem. New facilities. Thank you for mentioning Family Resource Center. I think that's, that's amazing. But, you know, one thing I will say is I was born and raised in Burbank, went to Burbank schools, was student board member when she was a board member, you know, been here a bit. And culturally, this has been a GCC, PCC kind of town culturally. And I don't know if it's lack of awareness, lack of connection, you name it. And, and so a part of, you know, kind of seeking this like middle college or dual enrollment pathway is a part of bridging that. But I would like to be a partner in working to elevate that more and more. I think that there are so many assets, as well as like frankly, just mass transit options, that can serve more students in our area than the current routes allow for Glendale or Pasadena. Both are phenomenal. I'm also a former student body president of Glendale Community College, so just saying. But, you know, Valley has a ton to offer Burbank, and I'm not sure it's fully aware. So where we can collaborate to raise that awareness to either, you know, obviously, there's tabling, things like that, but really connecting you with parents that I think are driving some of these decisions or gently guiding them. I think we can really develop not only our connection academically, but really include a greater amount of enrollment long-term. So I hope we can work together in that, and I will certainly reach out separately. So just thank you for your work.
Awesome. Thank you so much. And I'm going to take you up on that offer. Awesome.
Thank you, Madam Chair. So Dr. Grivens, you know, I don't want my Glendale College friends to hear this, but I did go to GCC, but then I transferred to Valley, so go Monarchs, you know. Great, and word of mouth, and that's why I ended up there. But the campus, oh my God, I mean, I went a couple of years ago, didn't recognize it, and I went there recently, I was like, oh my God. But the pool is still there, right?
Yeah, oh, yeah.
Oh, I love that pool. Great memories to go there every summer. I also, again, want to thank you on this wonderful partnership. And, and, you know, we're very proud of Valley College. But I also want to take this opportunity for, to ask you to explain, you know, homelessness is an issue, and people don't think that Burbank students, we don't have homeless people here. I know that there is a bond that's, that was just approved to be on the ballot. I know a lot of our, you know, we have a lot of people who, you know, work at Burbank but live in the LA who can vote on this. And I know part of the bond is going to be addressing student housing. Can you reiterate a little about what the proposed bond is? And, you know, I know you've done a fantastic good job with your programs with housing, but I know this is a conversation that the district is talking about because it's become a big issue, you know. So if you can just talk a little about the bond and, and some of our supporters who are out there listening, they can support it. Because I know Burbank can vote, Burbank residents can, but LA can. And a lot of our, you know, we have a lot of people who work in Burbank but live in LA, but their students come to Burbank.
Yeah, thank you for that. Thank you for that question. And since our service area does include Burbank, the bond will also include.
Oh, it will? Oh, okay. Oh, we can vote on that?
Yeah.
Oh, okay.
And of course, I can't advocate.
This is why I'm talking about, we need to talk.
I can't advocate for, for the bond, but I can provide some information about it. You're 100% correct. Part of the bond, the board did vote to put a bond on the ballot for this November. The bond does include money earmarked for housing to help with, help student housing. It's a significant amount of resources. It will also, if passed, fund a lot of infrastructure. So for Valley, we have some amazing new facilities that were funded by taxpayers, and we're deeply appreciative of that. We do have some infrastructure work that's, that needs to be done, that's aging. Of course, technology's radically changed, so the infrastructure from 70 years ago related to technology needs to be modernized. Those are the types of projects that would be funded by the bond if passed. And then the other thing I just want to mention real quick is we do have beds available now for our homeless students. So as we are able to identify students who are homeless, we can immediately connect them with beds. So we have beds available for students, not just transitional housing, though that's really important, the housing, a lot of the different projects like Hope of the Valley. But we have other, other beds that we've purchased for our homeless students. And that's important. As I mentioned yesterday, we noticed a student who was, had some of the telltale signs of being homeless, carrying a blanket, backpack. So we engaged him and checked what his needs were, and we're working to connect him with food. We immediately got, were able to get him some food. Our Cowworks people are amazing, and immediately got him set up and then started working on his housing situation.
So can we agendize?
An endorsement of the bond.
An endorsement of the bond?
You bet. I'll move that we, we bring that back on a future agenda to endorse the bond measure.
Great.
Thank you.
My colleagues have covered any questions. I just wanted to say thank you for the presentation. I do agree with my colleagues that, and especially to Mr. Ferguson's point, that for a long time, students, if they were thinking of the community college route, weren't thinking LA Valley College. I'm very happy that three students I know, returning students, including my daughter's boyfriend, have enrolled at Valley College. And I'm very happy because I've, I've seen you, I've met you before at a presentation at Burbank High. I realize, you know, what incredible programs you have available. You've been great partners, you know, with, you know, dual enrollment. And I think we do need to find ways to increase that, you know, that knowledge, that awareness. So, but thank you for being here. I know you had to wait a little bit, but I think it was worth it because you saw some great speakers, and we really appreciate you presenting all this information to us.
Yeah, thank you so much.
I think, too, I'm sorry, one second, and I'll let you go, but you weren't born yet. So when I graduated high school almost 40 years ago, the trend, right, the trend really was to go to Valley College. And very few at that time were going to PCC especially or Glendale. And, and, you know, things, there's hills and valleys and everything. So hopefully that we're back up on the uprise to sending kids to Valley College. It is much closer. It's in our backyard. And what a beautiful campus. So I think you've moved in the right direction.
Yeah, thank you.
That, that will be, we'll see that coming.
And also, I want to acknowledge, a part of the problem was, was that we pulled back on our outreach efforts and our staffing of outreach efforts. When I came to Valley three years ago, my commitment was to reverse that, make sure that we are part of the community, and staffed up appropriately to help connect with the community and help the kids go to college. I'm okay if somebody wants to go to another college, but I do want to make sure that somebody is, that everybody is able to go to college. Everyone has access to going to college, and it's an easy process. So we have that commitment to all the communities that we serve, including Burbank. And anytime you invite me to something, I'll, I'll, I'll be there.
Two things. I also, I know you have a wonderful program when it comes to housing, but also food, you know. People don't know that food scarcity is a big issue. And I do want to take this opportunity to also thank Assembly Member Nazarian, who was very instrumental in getting funding and for the program that you have, which is wonderful. Madam Chair, I also want to take this opportunity to ask you if we can convey this meeting in honor and memory of one of our own constituents from Burbank, who was the director at Valley College for the foundation, all the funds that he's talking about, Mr. Raul Castillo, which we lost unfortunately to cancer this year. So if it is okay, you know, not only he was a great friend, but he helped a lot of students, including a lot of our Burbank students, with their needs with the foundation. So if it is okay with you, I will ask you that we, you know, convey the message in his memory as well. Thank you.
Thank you for that recognition of our dear friend, Raul.
Thank you. Anything else? Thank you again for coming.
Thank you so much.
Thank you again for coming tonight. We appreciate it.
My, our pleasure. Have a good evening.
Okay, so now we're going to move down to number 11, Reports to the Board, starting with 11A, Report on Burbank Unified School District Summer School 2022.
Hide the one that doesn't work. Okay. Good evening, President Tabit, Vice President Ferguson, members of the Board, Superintendent Hill, members of Cabinet, BUSD staff and community. My name is Robin Anders. I'm the Coordinator of Instructional Technology for Burbank Unified School District, and I'm going to be starting us off on a discussion about our summer school program that we offered this summer. And before I start, I just want to recognize a few people that made some outstanding contributions to make summer school happen this year. So we did have some transition and leadership over the summer and then at the, at the end of the school year. So I'd like to recognize our Student Information System analysts, which is Terry Smith and Brittany Conowalow. They quickly and efficiently turned around some scheduling and also some course requests. They're a very valuable part of our instructional services team, so I really wanted to appreciate them. Also wanted to recognize Robin Hatch and Narnia Barzigar, two very capable BUSD administrators up at Burbank High. They stepped up to serve as summer school principals during the summer session when their leadership was needed. So recognize them. And lastly, John Wells, who acted as TOSA for our summer school to take care of the day-to-day. So all those people stepped up to make sure that our program went successfully, which it did. So the first slide we're going to look at is, is credit recovery for our summer school by common courses that are provided. When it comes to special education, that, that first row, I wanted to highlight that we had 109 basic courses, or 109 students participate in basic courses, but we also had 235 students that were RSP students or recognized as special ed, complete other courses or courses in total. So a lot of our, our special ed students really benefited from our summer school, not just in those specific basic courses. PE numbers fluctuated over the last couple of years, but we're kind of back up on an increase. I see English went down quite a bit. There was a spike last year in 2021 in our English numbers, but those are starting to come back down as far as the number of credits needed to recover there. Next slide, to begin with Algebra I. We had a decrease in the number of credits recovered in Algebra I. I'd like to think that that's part of our Algebra project, that we had fewer failures than the need. And because of that, we were able to offer some credit recovery in Algebra II, which we had not done previously, which was, I think, a good benefit to our students to finish out their math or to continue on that A through G track. Geometry, also consistent. And then our, our non-grad seniors was lower this year, but in total, 675 students. Initial credit for summer school, those numbers were pretty stable, but we did see a pretty significant increase in the number of students wanting US history for initial credit. And we were able to serve those students with Mr., or Dr. Paramo, myself, kind of making some last-minute attempts to make sure we had the teachers we needed to provide those teacher, those students, those courses. And in total, we had 1,031 students participate in an initial credit course this summer. During the school year, regular school year credit recovery, numbers were down just a little bit this year from previous years, but we had 68 students from Burrows, 113 from Burbank High, and 53 from Monterey participate in a credit recovery program during the school year. And I really wanted to highlight a new program that we offered this summer, which was the grade improvement portion of summer school. This is new because of grant funding that we're able to provide this. And this is to help students stay on track with A through G requirements by improving a grade that was a D to a C to be able to be prepared for UC or CSU requirements. Last group that we want to report out on is our Math Acceleration Summer School. Those numbers were down this year from previous years, but those, we did have a fair amount of students accelerate over the summer so that they can move into an advanced track class the following year or when they get to high school. So a quick summary of our total numbers, the total number of instances of, of credits or recovered credits, both during summer school and during the school year is a total of 915 students that received or credits. Total number of students for initial credit was 1,031. New was the, the number of grade improvements, which was 160 total. And then our total number of math acceleration students was 81. Results from these efforts, we served approximately 1,200 students with two, over 2,000 credits or courses, both in, in, excuse me, virtual and in-person classes. For the first time, all programs ran concurrently with, with the inclusion of grade improvement. So last year was the first year that we were able to provide all programs concurrently, but the addition of the grade improvement is new this year. High demands for initial credit classes, including US history and world history, which I highlighted, and then increased credit recovery in science and upper, upper level math classes. Those were the two primary courses or subjects that we were able to serve through that grade recovery. So, yeah. And then Dr. Paramo.
Sir, I just wanted to share that, first of all, while I oversee the summer school program for the secondary, Dr. Anders has taken on a much larger role with that. And he was very generous in recognizing everybody, but I need to recognize him, especially the online component and with Aries classes, I'm sorry, Apex classes, and getting his whole team mobilized to do scheduling was just amazing. And so I'm very grateful for that. Since we're at the summary part, what I want to make sure that I say is that we've heard from our social studies teachers in our initial meetings at the beginning of the school year, which is just a week ago, and they have brought forward a recommendation for our initial credit classes. Because we have such a high volume now, and you can see through the data, we're serving in the hundreds, they want to see that as an initial credit class that's in person. So we had turned it into online because during COVID, it was more important, and teachers wanted that flexibility. But they feel like it's really important, just given that it's a whole year's course in, in six weeks, that it go back to an in-person. So we heard you, and we will make some accommodations for next summer school.
And then I'd like to introduce Dr. Knappik to present on elementary and ESY programs.
So just like secondary programs, it takes a village, it takes a team to go ahead and pull it all together. So I want to do a huge shout out to the elementary team, our principals, our curriculum specialists, our office managers, all of our teachers, who are all played a part because they helped in the design, the identification, they helped in talking to parents, they helped in getting kids enrolled, enrollments completed, ensuring that communication was going out. So huge shout out to the entire elementary team. And then also for the elementary summer school academy groups, too, the teaching staff, the instructional assistants, all of our custodial staff who work day in and day out. I'd be remiss by not saying something about our teaching staff. I just want to, aside, you know, they worked how many days during the school year last year? 187 days. And then they said, hey, Peter, sign me up. 30 more days. No problem. And they were there every day. Huge, huge benefit to our kids. Our yard supervisor, our food service staff, HR staff, hallelujah for them, budget staff, our site leads, and then the office staff at these, at the school. So once again, very, very, very successful. So we started on June 6th, went through July 21. It's like running a marathon, and we had four locations for various summer academies. And I'm including the summer YMCA Learn, Grow, Thrive program in that compilation of programs, too. Here, once again, you can see just a little bit of a breakdown of the various programs at the various school sites. We did run programs from 8:30 to 5:30. So in the morning, roughly 8:30 to 1 o'clock, we had a focus on academics. And in the afternoons, 1:00 to 5:30, we had childcare offerings and supplemental programs during that time. 1 to 5:30, we had childcare offerings and supplemental programs during that time period. You'll see our leads there, Jennifer King, Laura Kubler, Jennifer Goldenberg, who led up the summer academies, and then Samantha Cole from the YMCA Go Team. TK through 5, we also had instructional assistants every classrooms. We identified kiddos that scored 1s, 2s, or who are identified at risk or English learners from based on report cards and also on schools reporting that. You'll see the bottom line there, the numbers of students, 168 students in our summer academies at McKinley, Miller, and Providencia combined, and then at Emerson, we had 32 students, and Luther, we had 21 sixth graders, too. And by the way, all of these programs were funded by ELAP funds or by Title I funds. ELAP, the Expanded Learning Opportunities Program through the state of California that provided funding for the program, and once again, Title I funds. We provided reading language arts, mathematics, social emotional learning throughout all the entire programs, and we did pre and post tests, too. So very, very, very successful. So yay, team. And with that, I'll turn it over to Ms. Cassejo to talk about special ed.
Good evening, President Tabit, members of the Board, Dr. Hill. So for special education, we have our extended school year. So the extended school year is the federal law that we are required to offer special education students 20 extra days of instruction in the summer, and it's really designed to make sure that students maintain their learning and they don't regress. So there's really, that's the purpose. However, there is some criteria. So there's really two criteria. One is to, again, prevent that regression of all the learning that they had during the year, and then the second criteria is to make sure that it doesn't impact the new year's learning because they have to spend so much time trying to relearn some of the concepts that they had learned the prior year. So it's really to maintain that flow and to keep them at the same level that they ended the school year with. So that's the purpose, and not all students qualify for that. So in Burbank Unified, we have 698 students who qualify per their IEPs for that extra summer school session of extended school year, and the ones who actually attended and took advantage of that service was 391 students, which is actually an increase of 50 more students than the prior year, which we anticipated because, as you all know, they were the students who were most impacted by the pandemic, and so we anticipated a greater need in summer school, and we still are, you know, managing that need. So if you look at the next slide, it talks about the programs that we served with extended school year, and you can see that we had everything from speech to preschool, elementary, independent study, and our FACS program as well, with the greatest number at elementary with 196 students. Okay, so that's the end of our slides anyway. So in our presentation, any questions?
Dr. Weisberg has a question.
Thank you to all of you. So, so helpful. One of my questions is why Dr. Koss isn't here to present. Sharon, you did a phenomenal job as always, but generally speaking, we're not having Dr. Koss present on special ed, and I'm not sure why. I think it'd be important for us to hear from her. I just don't know the reason for that.
We asked her not to come because there's some illness in her department.
Oh.
Yeah.
Good choice.
Yeah.
Thank you for that.
No problem.
My other question is, for anybody who wants to answer it, is this sounds unbelievably successful. Are there things that we should be thinking about now that we can do to better support next summer? Like, what did you find you needed more of, support, resources? It'd just be good to sort of think about now.
We had the same struggle this last summer as we've had the last previous years in retaining math teachers. That's a big issue for us. We did a lot better, though. We did a lot better because we recruited earlier. So we had at least one teacher that we hired from outside of the district to fill in for a class. So what we have been relying on is our site administrators, working with the math departments to try to get notice out early enough, and also trying to accommodate them in terms of sometimes just location, where am I going to have to teach from and what's my assignment? We're trying to accommodate them so that we can get them and hold on to them. Social studies this year was a problem as well. We've never had a problem before, but it's because of the volume of kids that wanted to take the course. So it's a good, it's a good problem, but the numbers are, I don't know if it's appropriate to say post-COVID, I'm just going to take liberties and say post-COVID. The numbers for summer school and our summer school programs have gone way up. A lot of that had to do with the fact that we have kids that didn't do well in virtual learning, and they're still trying to recover. So I just want to assure you that it's taken more than one year for them to recover for some of those classes. That's why we see that summer school is still thriving and there's still large numbers. You know, and just because, I don't want to forget, and it's in the forefront of my mind right now, one of the biggest support groups that we had for summer school was our health services and our nurses, and I don't think that people think about that, but with summer school being so large and we had multiple locations, we really depended on our school nurses, and they were phenomenal and did a great job. So I just want to make sure that I give a shout out to Lenora and all her group.
I was going to add one, too. So the Great Improvement Program was new, and so I think we can do a little bit better, too, of publicizing or getting the word out about what that is. I think some students and maybe even some teachers were a little bit reluctant to go into that program because it was new and they didn't know what it was going to look like, but I think it was a really good experience for everyone who did participate, where we can see increased participation in that, too.
May I just add one more challenge?
Yeah.
And that has to do with facilities. When we ended on July 21 at four locations in elementary school with 10 to 15 classrooms per building of those four buildings, that really put a burden on the system. We had to turn, we, facilities had to turn them around really quickly. That put a burden. So part of the ELAP program is that we need to do 30 days additional days, extended days of the school year, and so that just layers just a little bit more of a challenge onto us. Yeah, that's a good one, maybe. I'm going to defer to Ms. Cucke, maybe.
You know what? I mean, we anticipate that. We know it cuts it close, and it's just with the short staff, I think we could have been better prepared if we had more people to deploy, but we know that happens. We just know that happens.
Yeah.
I would, I would just say that we have done amazing in the past. I mean, we've had armies of custodial staff go to the high school that did summer school so that in the couple of weeks right before school starts, they're getting it all done, and we've always done a great job. It's just, this year was a little bit more challenging because of staffing, so.
It wasn't that important.
Yes, sir.
I'm going to get in trouble if I listen to you on that one. Anyway, so first things first, thank you. This is a lot, and to all the different constituency groups, I know I'm a bit of a bomb thrower, consider that right now, but my thanks are very sincere because I see how much work you're doing. Having said that, what I saw last summer, frankly, getting ready for this, and I am taking a little bit of liberty here, frankly, was Dr. Paramo doing handstands, backflips, and everything he could, and others, to fill this, to the point where, frankly, and a lot of folks to fill these gaps wherever they stood, it is not sustainable for that to continue or for us to rely on one personality here, here, and here. And so what I want to see is while one-time money is coming in, that we are thinking again proactively, not reactively, and that before the beginning of next semester, we have, hey, how can we allocate one-time funding right now to address these problems differently or supplement recruitment staff? But I want to see those strategies written down, and I want to see those, and know that they've been thought through and not, and again, I don't think anybody's forgotten it, per se, but I think we are relying a little bit too much on, frankly, how passionate you all are about the jobs that you do, and I'd like to see stuff more articulated in advance so, again, we're not, we're not being as reactive and, frankly, burning you out. Thanks.
Thank you.
Yes, sir.
So we just had our college people here, and I know there's been some changes, but you saw an uptick in some courses like advanced math for summer. Do you think it also kind of, you know, is connected to the fact that now a lot of colleges are asking for some of these courses to be there because there's been some challenges at community colleges with students, you know, not taking these courses or having trouble? I'm just curious if you see any kind of an increase because of that, or is it just because, you know, that's become a topic, a subject that a lot of students are now more interested? I'm just curious, you know? What area do you see this increase? Because I've noticed math was a big increase.
So we are, I am seeing more requests come to my office to take classes at the community college for advanced math. Before, that used to be a handful, and now it is not uncommon for that to happen and to occur. Some of it is due to a student's desire to go into engineering or biological science or one of the sciences, for sure, because that's what's written on the petition. So I do, I do see that. I have seen that. We also are, I think, in my opinion, doing a great job in our district of allowing kids to accelerate in the middle school, so they're getting to the higher levels of math courses that our district offers sooner, which means that they're looking for other avenues when they've maxed out and want to continue in doing linear geometry or whatever at community college because they've completed what they could here.
Yeah, I mean, and I'm, I love it because I'm also seeing a lot of students now, even in college level, getting into engineering, which is great. Out of just curiosity, since we're talking about summer, I know we used to have programs with Woodbury University, and I know we cut the ties at one point. Are we talking? Is it going to come back?
We had a really hard time filling those, to be honest.
Oh, okay, that's what it was.
Yeah, absolutely. We had a hard time filling those, and we've been able to, the programs that we were offering through Woodbury, we're still doing it. So we're still offering it. We're just offering it through our school, and we're capitalizing on our own teaching staff.
Thank you, Dr. Paramo. Thank you, Dr. Knappik, and Robin, and Mrs. Cassejo. Thank you so much for all your hard work for summer school. 11B, Report on Addressing Gaps in Learning, Academic Growth and Support. Mrs. Cas, oh, Robin, Mr. Anders?
Good evening again, President Tabit, Vice President Ferguson, members of the Board, Superintendent Hill, members of the Cabinet, BUSD staff and community. Again, Robin Anders, Coordinator of Instructional Technology. This is a follow-up presentation. We did one earlier in, I believe, April or May, and so this is kind of an interview reporting on where we ended up. First, I want to do a little bit of front-loading on how we plan to use our data for this year. This is a protocol that LA County is suggesting as well, but what you'll notice throughout the slides is that I'm specifically and intentionally not pointing out trends or data that I want people to focus on. I want everyone to be able to draw their own conclusions, raise questions, identify their own trends, and that's a protocol as part of this. As far as what we want to do with our sites when we look at data is allow people to look at from their perspective and come and bring their own conclusions or their own theories to the table so that we can identify, one, some of the situations or circumstances that led up to some of the results that we've seen, but also respond with equity when we do identify and hear from different voices why they think the data says what it does. Having said that, we did have a lot of challenges in 2021, 2022, and we responded to those quite well. And what you're seeing here is our initial CASP data. Again, these are our grades three, four, five, six, seven, eight, and grade 11 that participate in the state CASP assessments. These are the initial scores, so this isn't what's specifically not going to be published or this isn't public data yet. It's initial, so this could change or be adjusted slightly once they've finalized and published all scores. But these are our scores from the last, the end of last school year, and I wanted to be able to compare those to what we did pre-pandemic. So we did miss a year without testing, spring of 2020, and in 2021, there was a lot of viability issues and validity issues with state testing, so we didn't look at those scores. We looked at the pre-pandemic scores. And so these, this is what comes from the public reporting directly from the website, and you can see from the 18, 19 school year, we had 42 or basically 43% of our students met or exceeded the standards in math and just shy of 60% in English Language Arts. So I'm going to go back a slide one more time so we can see this year, and that there is, we had an increase in our math, in the percentage of students that are meeting the standards in math, which I think is a big, we need to pat our teachers on the back, our math departments, and everyone who contributed to that, coming out of the year of distance learning. Our English Language Arts scores remain stable, and those are high scores in English Language Arts. So again, these are initial state testing scores. When it comes to our elementary data, we wanted to highlight where we started in the fall and where we ended in the spring, and so this highlights those scores using our I Ready Assessment System of students, their scores, and where they were at at grade level at the beginning of the year and where they ended at grade level and that grade level at the end of the year and the growth that occurred. This next slide is our district CASP results by grade level for the elementary grades that participate in state testing. You can see that fifth grade, 50% of our students have met the standard, and this is, again, in math. 50% of our fourth graders and then 60% of our third graders are meeting, met or exceeded the standards in math. And we're shifting now to English Language Arts or reading, and we can see that there's considerable growth from the beginning of the year and the end of the year in our I Ready assessments. Our ELA data from state assessments by grade level in elementary, fifth grade was at 66%, fourth grade at 59, excuse me, 59, and then our third grade at 56% met or exceeded standard. So we're going to now look at middle school, and middle school also uses the I Ready program for benchmarking. This is by grade level now, and so you can see the growth, considerable growth in sixth grade, not as much in eighth grade as we go through. So we do see a little bit more growth in the lower grade levels with the I Ready Assessment from beginning of the year to end of year. And then our middle school math data, in sixth grade, we're at 35%, met or exceeded 41% in seventh grade, and then we are at 39% in our eighth grade. So seventh grades are a little bubble there of performing students. So how have our reading placements changed from fall to spring? So now we're shifting to English Language Arts. Again, you can see that growth, and it starts to slow down a little bit in those upper grades as opposed to the younger grades. And then our end-of-year CASP data, state assessments for middle school by grade level, sixth grade 52%, seventh grade 57%, and then our eighth grade at 52% for English Language Arts. And traditionally, in Burbank, we've performed a little above in English Language Arts than math, so it's nice to see that we are seeing growth in our math scores. So now we're going to drill down specifically to students that we identified for intervention or support. This is part of the work of the academic growth and support and some of the funds that we received to support students coming out of the year of distance learning and pandemic. So this is a chart that was presented at the last board presentation, and what this does is identifies students that were identified and the different types of supports that we provide them at our sites. So this is our elementary cohort of students receiving interventions or identified as below grade level that we wanted to support to move to be at grade level. And you can see that they also had considerable growth. Students that were two or three below, two or three years below grade level decreased considerably by the end of the year, but we still have some work to do in those areas. But we still have some work to do in those areas. You can also see that there were some students that were just at or just below that are now above or right at grade level. And sorry, that last slide, we were starting with ELA for this slide, and then we're moving on to math. And again, our elementary grades by grade level. So you can see considerable reduction in the upper grade levels in the students that are far below and also an increase, again, because there's, we're, we're seeing growth in our students that need those extra supports. So now we're going to move to our secondary intervention students, and this is primarily middle school that we focused on. So we did just get a report from our high school about credit recovery. That's our primary focus for high school students as far as interventions. And for middle school, we also are incorporating iReady assessments as well as other interventions. And this highlights some of those interventions we provide to students. The iReady results for middle school aren't as encouraging. So we started the beginning of the year with students that we identified below grade, grade level or failing classes and where they ended at the end of the year. And what you see is a loss of middle ground. So students either moved up or they moved down. And so that's something to look at. And I think it's also something for us to know that there's still work to be done, especially for those students that maybe were struggling at the end of the year. So the last slide was English Language Arts, and then this next slide is math, and we see the same phenomenon. Would also note that as the, not only the instructional technology coordinator also coordinate all the district assessments, that there could have been some testing fatigue in our middle schools by the end of the year because they just came off of the state assessments and then also the iReady assessments. Having looked at the iReady data, I did want to highlight, though, the grade data for our intervention students. So these are specifically, again, this intervention cohort at middle school, and it's their first semester and second semester English grades. And you can see that they did remain pretty stable and in fact, even some improvement in some areas for our students. So while the iReady results, we didn't see the growth that we hoped at some students that were below grade level. They are, these are encouraging grades that they're, they're being able to complete their courses. And then again, this also is the same type of data with math in our middle school, specific to our intervention students. Within the appendix, I just wanted to note for anyone that's listening or if anyone would like to look at the board report, there, we do break down statistically or provide percentage performance for our ELD students and our special ed students. So that data is in there as well to look at those subgroups. And we do provide some information. I think there was a request last time about how we compare nationally when it comes to iReady, and that data is also in the appendix as well. So entertain any questions or considerations.
I like that you used the word entertain. I just had a question regards to the breakdown to ethnicity and gender in the data that we're looking at. Am I, what? I don't, I don't.
It's not, we didn't disaggregate by ethnicity or gender.
I think it could be helpful.
Okay.
Moving forward to have a better understanding of there are specific groups of students that we need to be figuring out if they need more support or different support. So that could be really helpful. That, that was my, I guess it was a statement that I talked up at the end, so it sounded like a question. But I think for me, that would be very helpful to see.
It is one of the, we do disaggregate that when we look at the data sites.
Okay.
But it's something I could include in this packet.
Yeah, even if it is by site, I think just being able to see it and look at it would, for me, would be very helpful and just sort of tracking like areas of growth and areas of success. Thank you, Dr. Anders.
Great point. I concur with what my colleague just shared, but also for the Armenian students, I don't, do we differentiate them? Because technically, they're considered Caucasian. Do we have the ability to, was it based on the language they speak as a second?
Yes and no. So it's difficult to disaggregate that because then we are kind of using the home language as, as a way to identify those, those students and may not be necessarily accurate to, to the ethnicity. But as far as the state and the way that they were reported, there is not a way to disaggregate by the Armenian population, yes.
I appreciate this data. It's kind of the meta. It's a little bit zoomed out. So what, my challenge is, is that I hear a lot from parents who are very, very concerned about learning loss, and a lot of that is anecdotal. Some of that is quantitative based off of things they're seeing, grades, things like that. So I'm almost, and I know this is extra work, but I almost want to request that you kind of take your, your show on the road and do site by site where possible and really break it down for folks so that they can understand what's going on in the educational community that they're sending their child to as opposed to just the meta. So that way, if parent, so we give pathways, frankly, to parents and educators to be a part of understanding what the major challenges are on their campuses. I think that would help us build confidence back in a new way. I think it allows us to demonstrate transparency where we're not seeing growth where we should or that growth is taking longer to achieve. I, I think that's also a possibility, too. So there's a lot being juggled there, but, and, and again, I, I just think that taking this and making it and breaking it down by site could really help and I think could engage parents in a way that brings them back. So, thank you.
I do want to clarify, we, we do that. We break down all the data for each principals, and the principals review with their teams, and then you share it with their community. So that is something we already do.
So I, I'm asking for, what's, so obviously what we do hasn't been enough historically. So I'm, what I'm asking for is a different, more proactive approach on that front.
Can you clarify?
Sure. So maybe you partner with PTAs directly. Maybe Mr. and Dr. Andrews, excuse me, partners directly with the PTAs and sets it up with them. We're not necessarily relying on necessarily principals who will do a cookie cutter mold across the board. So what I'm asking for is maybe we engage PTA. We ask how that data would like to be presented to them, and, and we kind of follow their lead. Clear? Thank you.
Maybe possibly Dr. Anders could, when the principal presents it, it's Dr. Anders instead of the principal. Would that be helpful?
Well, can we work this out? Because we have 21 school sites, and I understand partnerships with the school sites. I want to empower our principals, but we will make sure that we are working together with them.
My concern is that communication has been routinely escalated as, as a problem. And so what I'm introducing here is a, is a possibility to where we could tailor it to allow parents to participate in how we are communicating with them. I, I get that logistically, we are short-staffed, but I, I think that at this point, after it's been kind of recurringly mentioned or mentioned in a recurring way by our community, that I think that parents should be a part of being able to design this, this conversation as it relates to their school and their campus.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Oops. I'm looking at the last couple of charts, kind of specifically. The, where it's the intervention cohort, it's the, the semester one and two math and semester one and two ELA, where there actually seem to be a, a significant decrease in grades on the math. There are, you know, a lot more Ds and Fs if I'm reading this properly, you know, and a decline in the, the As and Bs. So I, I guess my question is, do we, are we revisiting what we're doing? Because it doesn't, you know, we, we seem to be not really helping, able to find, you know, what we need to help these, you know, these students to, you know, get to a point of, you know, bringing the grades up. And I realize the first year, you know, really, you know, back in, was back in person, you know, from COVID. But, you know, are we looking at other intervention strategies to move beyond what we've been doing? Because these two strike me the most, that, you know, it's just, you know, we, the ELA isn't quite as bad because the, the numbers did go slightly down second semester, but the math, they, they clearly, the, the bad grades went up and the, and the good grades went down. So what, how are we looking at that and how are we approaching it?
I think one of the pieces that we're going to be evaluating this year is the iReady was, was implemented at the middle schools for the first time last year. So I think we need to keep a close eye on that program and whether it's being successful with our middle school students, but also to make sure it's being implemented with fidelity, that the components that are there are used, being used appropriately and properly with the students to support them, not. So iReady is, is a two-pronged approach. It, it does the benchmarking and the assessment, but it also has the instructional components that go along with it and pathways for students. So that's one. But, but also to continuing the conversation of tracking and identifying students and making sure it's early intervention to provide the support they need right away at the beginning of the year.
I guess what, how we, what do we, what protocols are we using to try and identify those students more, you know, earlier?
Yeah, we do have a monitoring system this year because it's the second year with iReady. I think we're going to be able to turn around much earlier in the year, the, the list for sites to compare. So sites have already identified a lot of these students already. They're, they're cross-comparing what we found as a district from our data with what they already have on their site to make sure we're not missing any students. I think that process can happen soon, earlier this year.
Okay, thank you so very much. Moving on to 11C, report on facilities and technology projects. Mrs. Cutka. Although it seems like we've already received the report during public comments.
Good evening, everybody. This is Shar, President Tavitt, board members, Dr. Hill and staff, community. So I'm here tonight to present our facilities and technology items that are on the consent agenda that are paid with bond dollars. There are eight items. So if we can get the PowerPoint. We have a ratification of rental agreement for facilities, which was the temporary fencing that went around the grass, the sod to protect it from our little kiddos as they're out in the, at recess. That was through contractor Andy Gump, and the amount is not to exceed $2,0092929. That's item 13Q. Item 13R is approval of additive change order number two. That is for landscaping and irrigation. These are all for Disney. On the two-story modular building, this is Marina Landscape. This is what we were talking about earlier with the $24,007.78 was to switch from the hydro seed to the sod. That was an upgrade that we were able to do. It provides instant grass and gratification, although we did note that it is, there are some brown spots, but they are responsible during the maintenance of the establishment period to take care of it. So if there are any issues, it's a guarantee. The next item is item 13S. Again, Walt Disney. The project is the site in structural concrete. The contractor is Santa Clarita, and the increased amount is $7,347.59, which brings the amount not to exceed $535,374. That was for construction of a CPI gravity wall at the black backflow area on the new We have item 13T. The project is the site in structural concrete, again, Santa Clarita concrete. This is, that brings the total not to exceed $586,402.99. The increased amount of $51,032.95 was to add the concrete flatwork underneath in the lunch shelter area and to extend it a little bit beyond what was the existing area so that it expanded the lunch area. It will allow for additional tables to be placed out with some shade. Again, that was an enhancement to the original plans. Item 13U, which is the geotechnical materials testing and inspection services. Fernando and Moore is the contractor. Contract amount now is not to exceed $145,000, and this increased amount of $30,000 brings the amount for the additional hours to perform the remaining items to, on the scope to complete the two-story building. We have item 13V. Project is to furnish material for the installation of infrastructure, wiring and devices of the Bogan system. The contractor is a Demco doing business as ADI. Contract amount is not to exceed $2,0610.58. This was just to account for a small amount due to the sales tax being omitted on the original change order. We have item 13W, which is the project is the 48-by-12-foot temporary mobile office. Contractor was William Scotsman. The contract amount not to exceed $16,768.12. The increased amount of $783.81 was to include additional expenses for maintenance and cleaning upon repair, return, excuse me. We have item 13X, which was the procurement and installation of playground equipment. The contractor is Play Power LT Farrington, Inc., doing a National Joint Power Alliance piggyback contract. You can see the number there. This contract amount is not to exceed $220,434.88. The increase of $11,294 was to upgrade the Spectapower in-place rubber surfacing. So it was an upgrade, again, and an additive enhancement. I would like to add, there were some questions about the sod and the watering and the three times a day. So we were, we were trying to be proactive. We put signs out that showed that we are using recycled water. That is not subject to the water restrictions. We confirmed that with BWP. And so that's the ability, that why we're able to do that.
When the, the two-week period that's coming up.
It does. We will be able to, and he, and, you know, Mr. Cross was very concerned because obviously we don't want to restrict that watering over that period, but the recycled water is exempted. So we are covered.
And, and quick question. That, that is all of our campuses or all of our campuses except for Miller?
It's, there are some areas of the smaller grass areas within the campus that maybe the recycled water isn't taken to. It is all our big fields.
So all, I don't, but are all schools on reclaimed water or?
Except for Horseman.
Horseman. Okay. Got it. Okay. That's helpful.
And the water, the city has brought the recycled water up to the front, and we've talked about it in some of our facilities meetings. It's, it would be quite a project because we'd have to bring it in, and there's the retaining wall.
Right.
So they'd have to bring the piping, they'd either have to dig or remove the wall and put it back. And so that's been a challenge, and I, but I think that is something that we need to do because it's rather an ISO.
Yeah.
To have not, you know, have that area not really be watered adequately.
Understood. Well, that's progress because I, I remember a few years ago, it was Miller that didn't have it or, and so thank you, Ron Davis and a number of other folks who, and, and.
A little pressure there.
Little bit. Little bit.
Yeah. I remember him coming to an SFOC meeting and saying, you people, we, we're bringing you the water. You need to take it in. And then one, just one other additional item. I think the current plans on the trees were to put in 24-inch, and I kind of looked at what that looked like, and they're maybe this tall. So I don't know if that's what Ms. Morrison was, was thinking that where we could put in. I think she's thinking bigger. They would be crepe myrtles, which grow very quickly. And Mr. Cross said that in order to put the bigger trees in, it gets a little bit more costly because you're having to bring a crane in to lift and, and drop. They will be in cement so that the, the roots do not do damage to anything that might be near and ruin the structural basis and cost trip hazards. But we'll, we will look into it and we'll look at the cost because there have been savings throughout.
Okay.
So we will, that is something we will look at.
Even if we could do, I'm sorry. Even if we did, you know, frankly, pop-up tents in the, you know, I, I don't know what's appropriate, but if, if there's something that, I mean, they're playing around solar panels on other school sites. So, you know, like, this is where I'm just saying, like, if, it is a relatively smaller footprint to cover and to provide shade. And so, you know, thankfully, the trees grow fast, but how fast? You know, one, two years' worth of, you know, creativity, I think.
You know, that's interesting because when we were in the heat of COVID, we bought a lot of tents because the nurses were concerned that there was going to be overflow and we'd need to expand the areas where we had to quarantine.
Right.
Students. So they are sitting in the warehouse.
Could be deployed.
So we, you know, if, if that does make sense, we can check with the principal, and if that makes sense, we can just deploy those out there.
Absolutely. Great. That's quick, at least, you know, and temporary.
Yeah. Be kind of cool, they could pretend they're camping out, right? Yeah.
And only till the winter. Yeah.
Okay, thank you so very much. All right, moving on to 12, new and or unfinished business. 12A, resolution number one, request for separation from service requirement exemption.
President Tavitt?
Yes, Mr. Ferguson?
I will move the Board of Education approved resolution, where is it? Right here, one. The request for separation from service requirement exemption as present, as amended.
Second.
Thank you for the motion and the second. I don't know if Mr. Frittner, she's just closer and I heard it first, so. Dr. Weisberg, I'll do you and him next time, okay? Sorry. For the second, any discussion? Anything? Okay. I think, okay. All those in favor, please say aye.
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 Opposed, say no. Motion carries five-zero. Thank you very much. 12B, Amendment to the 2022-2023 Instructional Calendars for Burbank Adult School.
President Tabit?
Yes, sir.
I'll move the Board of Education adopt the amendment to the 22, sorry, 2022-2023 Instructional Calendars for the Burbank Adult School as presented.
Thank you. And for the second, Dr. Aga Khanian, any discussion?
Just briefly, whoever is doing the social media over at the adult school is killing it.
Killing it. It's so good.
So, very, very informative, just, it's great.
It's fantastic.
And a good model for the rest of our institutions as they learn, including the raccoons, so.
Oh, my God, that was amazing.
Everything.
The raccoons trolling the kids.
Kudos over there.
That's our new director.
It's our new director, Mr. Nogera.
He's, it's fantastic.
I want to recognize leadership when it, so, good for him.
Those raccoons are.
Thank you.
Awesome.
Okay.
Have you seen it, Teflon?
Do we take a vote from the raccoons? What is, okay, how does that, anyway?
Yeah.
All right, all those in favor, any further discussion?
No.
That was fun, thank you. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries five-zero. 12-three, 12-C, excuse me. Approval of Verification of Requirements for Provisional Internship Permit with the State of California Commission on Teacher Credentialing.
President Tabit.
Mr. Ferguson.
I'll move the Board of Education approve the verification of requirements for a provisional internship permit between the Burbank Unified School District and the State of California Commission on Teacher Credentialing to fill in immediate staffing need effective August 19, 2022 through August 19, 2023, and that the authority to sign the verification of requirements for the provisional internship permit, the exercise pursuant to BUSD AR3314 is presented.
Second.
Thank you for the motion and the second. Mr. Fritner, any discussion? Okay, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries five-zero. 12D, Ratification of Chuck Lorre Family Foundation Grant Agreement.
President Tabit.
Mr. Ferguson.
I'll move that the Board of Education ratify the Chuck Lorre Family Foundation Grant Agreement between the Burbank Unified School District and the Chuck Lorre Family Foundation effective July 1, 2022 through July 30, 2024, in the amount of $340,000, and that the authority to sign the agreement, the exercise pursuant to BUSD AR3314 is presented.
Second.
Thank you for the motion, Mr. Ferguson, and the second, Dr. Weisberg. Any discussion?
The Chuck Lorre Foundation continues to be a major partner of this district.
Absolutely.
And so if there's anything that we can do to, again, reiterate our thanks for the years of partnership, I would love to do that.
Yeah.
Thank you for bringing this.
I need to apologize, I think I messed up. The first 12A was an amended. Did you say amended?
He said it.
Thank you for that. Good catch. I missed it totally. Okay. Thank you for that. Any further discussion?
May I?
Yes, please.
Thank you. I just think it's really important because they have been a fantastic partner to us for multiple years now, and I would say it's probably reached close to $1 million that they've invested in our district. And this is another $340,000 over two years, and it's really $10,000 to each of our schools over two years to really advance STEM education, which is in support, of course, of their program, the Young Sheldon. And we are thrilled because it's going to help us with advancing some of our high school and NAF Academy medical, you know, all the fancy equipment. It will help with our textbook adoption that's new in science and getting extra lab equipment and things like that. And also, at the elementary level, they're really doing more of their Osmos and all of that kind of coding. Yeah. And so we're really thrilled to be working with them again, and they have been a fantastic partner to the district.
I, out of curiosity, do we have any, any, anything, have they named after him or any, any thoughts about possible naming down the road or something for their continued support?
We currently don't have anything.
Okay, thank you.
I suggest you read the board policy on naming procedures.
That's correct.
And there is ways to get it done and rules you got to follow.
I mean, but maybe it's something about like a proclamation or just some public thanks or something because they're, I mean.
Absolutely.
That's where I was going.
Yeah, that's what I thought.
No buildings. I know we disagree on that, but that, you know, I hear you. You can still have a stadium for Pepsi or something, I don't, you know, but yeah, thanks.
Yeah, is it possible for them, for us to acknowledge them in one of our meetings, give them a plaque or something?
That was my suggestion, so if there's, if there's a way that doesn't.
Do we have contact with them that we can?
Well, if it's not too burdensome on staff, you know, so ask for presentation.
We'll get it done.
That was burdensome.
We'll get it done, thank you. Get it done, thank you.
Now, can we call for a vote? We good?
Your call.
Okay, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Fantastic. Motion carries five-zero. Appreciate it. 13, Consent Agenda.
President Tabit?
Yes, Mr. Ferguson.
I will move consent calendar items 13A through 13X, except for items which board members wish to pull.
Second.
Motion and a second, anyone? Are we good to proceed? Okay. All those in favor of approving Consent Agenda 13A through 13, sorry.
X.
X, appreciate that. Please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, please say no. Great. Motion carries, Consent Agenda Approval carries five-zero.
And then we're adjourned.
Yes, we are, except we have one request. Dr. Hill, superintendent's comments and responses?
Yes, I know we consolidated earlier, but I want to give Ms. Cutka an opportunity to talk about some very bittersweet news.
As some people alluded to today, a couple of the speakers, I am, my last day with the district will be September 30th, and I'm looking forward to spending some, you know, family time that's kind of been sacrificed over a little bit. I have a new grandson that I'm going to enjoy spending time with. But just, you know, when I was reflecting back on my career with BUSD, or my experience, volunteer time started in 1988 where I served on the Parent Ed Council. And there was a parent that was there that happened to teach at Jefferson and was in the PTA and looped me in. So as a kindergarten parent, I was the fourth VP for, in PTA, and went on to serve at Mirren, Burbank High, and council PTA. I was president, treasurer, ledge, ledge chair, parliamentarian, and that somehow got me onto the superintendent's budget committee, where I served from 2001 to 2004, which led to me being a board member from 2005 to 2012. In 2013, when Measure S came, I served on the campaign committee as the assistant treasurer, filing all their reports, continued for many years because we had funds left over. I served on the School Facilities Oversight Committee from 2014 to 2019, and that's when I came into this current position. So I'm really proud to culminate my, my experience with BUSD, having served here. There are some amazing people in this district. We do great things. The kiddos, we put first. And, you know, it's, it is bittersweet to be leaving. I feel there's lots left to do. You may see my face again volunteering and maybe when my grandchild, you know, and right now, the way it's slated, would go to Jefferson in five years, so. Anyway, I thank you for the time to indulge me.
Could that be a third generation?
Yes, yeah.
Jefferson?
Correct. I went to Horseman here in Burbank High. My kids went to Jefferson here in Burbank High. So Graham Joseph is slated to follow in their footsteps, at least for right now.
If, I mean, we've had a conversation about your wonderful career here in Burbank and with the city, and I have so much respect and admiration for you and really thank you. And you're right, we'll see your face. You're, you're just putting on a different hat at the moment, so thank you so much for all you've done for us. And I'm not going to say goodbye, but I'll see you around.
Right.
You tell your, you spit out your resume relatively quickly, and I will say, I remember it, some of that, experiencing it a little differently. I think I believe, I believe I remember I served on the school site council with you at Burbank High School.
Right.
You also handed me one of your campaign buttons right in the middle of the dice there when you were running for school board for the first time. It was green with purple outlining. I still have that button. You attended my mom's funeral, and you modeled in many ways for me, both in times when we have agreed personally and disagreed, how committed you are to the mission here. When I have thought about being a board member, running for a board member, you have always been a model for how I've hoped to, to serve, or at least to, to match a commitment level. And I still, you know, I think I learn constantly when I'm interacting with you, and I've just been so grateful for your service to this community, for how mission-oriented you are, and how much you continue to give. So thank you for being a model for me in leadership, and I will miss you terribly in this district as a, as a partner in this way, but certainly hope in the future we can partner in others. Thank you.
No, no, but I just, this is your last, not your last meeting.
No.
Okay, so, yeah, we'll get there, thank you.
There's a couple more.
Okay, well, thank you, then for, then we will come back. I will. Yes, please, yes.
Sorry, you're gonna have, we're gonna have.
Yeah, thank you.